Morning, everybody. Let me call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the governing body. January 21. We're starting a little late. We're set for a 10:00 AM start. Before we get going, let me ask everybody if you have a cellphone on you, please. Turn it off, airplane mode, whatever keeps it from ringing. That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you all for coming this morning to this special meeting. We're going to start with, as we always do, with our process. Speaking of things ringing, pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Villarreal, salute to the New Mexico flag, led by Councilor Lee Garcia, and then an invocation from Councilor Michael Garcia. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start this morning's proceedings with thanking Mother Nature for the recent blessing of all of the abundance of snow we've received in our area. It's much needed. And Mother Nature, please bring some more. I would like for us to recognize that there was one bond that unites all of us. And that bond is love. It's the love of our country, the love of our state, the love of our city, the love of our community, and the love for one another. So as we move forward today, let us keep that in thought as we move forward with our discussions. Let them be with the thought of love, with our decisions. Let them be with the thought of love. And as we move forward as a city, let it be with the thought of love. As the legendary Beatles once said, "All we need is love." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any remembrances today? Someone we want to call to mind? Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. In today's paper, there is a tribute to George Bayless, who died at the age of 91. Encourage you all to read it. He worked on my first campaign. He was a constituent and just a delightful man who I very much enjoyed. And just want to send my condolences to his family and friends. And remember him here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any others? Let's take a minute and keep him in mind and others we've lost, people who are suffering in our community. Let's keep them in our hearts as we take a moment to think of them. Thanks, everybody. You're gonna miss the roll call. You wanna, Sid, you wanna wait for the roll call? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Weber.
Present.
Councilor Cassett.
Here.
Councilor Chavez.
Here.
Councilor Lee Garcia.
Here.
Councilor Michael Garcia.
Present.
Councilor Lindell.
Councilor Rivera.
Councilor Mary Worth.
Here.
Councilwoman Villarreal.
Present.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, you wanna put into the record the item number seven that is our reason for being here this morning? If you have a chair that's open next to you, there are people still looking for places to sit, so please raise a hand. Folks, if you see a hand up, that means there's a spare chair that you could occupy.
Mayor, item seven, eight is consideration of a bill, number 2022-22, adopting an ordinance. This is for case number 2022-5063. This is a 2200 Old Pecos Trail rezoning. This is case number 2022-5063, the Montoya Land Use Consulting Incorporated. Agent for the Pierre Amistoy applicant requests approval of a bill to rezone approximately 9.59 acres, located at 2200 Old Pecos Trail, within the South Central Highway Corridor Overlay District and the Suburban Archaeological Review Overlay District, from R1 residential, one dwelling per acre, to R3 residential, three dwellings per acre. And Dan Escobal is our case manager for this item.
Thank you. And while we're resuming, there may be some people today with us who were not present at any of the other, either of the other two hearings. Madam City Attorney, can you remind us what it means to have a quasi judicial proceeding? And advise folks who were sworn in previously that they're still under oath?
Mayor Weber, good morning, everyone. We are continuing the quasi judicial matter, which is one of, is a land use case. And in these types of cases, rezonings, we do have the governing bodies sitting in a different posture than they do in their policymaking roles, which is, rather than considering whether they're going to adopt a new law or policy, they're considering how the existing laws of the City of Santa Fe apply to the facts that are presented during this case. Just an administrative note, there was a request for the redacted version of a letter that's included in your packet to be included in addition to the unredacted letter. So we're going to be loading that this morning. It was a letter you received in September on this case from Mr. Throne. So you already have the unredacted version. We're going to load the redacted version as well that you received in September.
And because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, people are sworn.
Mayor Weber, that's correct. So if you have already been sworn, that was in the same case. So just let us know that you were already sworn in this matter when you get to the microphone if you're coming up to answer a question today. If you haven't been sworn for some reason, please alert the governing body and we will swear you in.
Great. Thank you. The process we use for these hearings is somewhat different from other matters that come before the governing body. In this case, we are following our rezoning and land use procedures. And we are at the part of the process where members of the governing body have the opportunity to ask questions, to get more information, and to add to our knowledge of the case. Governing body members can ask questions of staff, of the applicant, of anyone who has testified from the public, from our own team in land use. And we've been trying to go through the governing body members, shooting for about a 10-minute per person round of questions. We've gone around once, I think, at the end of our last hearing, there was there were still some unanswered questions that members of the governing body wanted to proceed with. When we finish the questions, I will then be closing the public hearing. And once that is closed, we won't be asking more questions. So to the governing body members, if you have questions, please ask them while the hearing is open, so we don't have to make a motion to reopen it. Then we'll consider a motion with a second, whether it's to grant or to deny the application. And the person who makes the motion is asked to state his or her reasoning, or their their findings of fact that would go into the vote. Governing body then can discuss and deliberate. Again, we're trying to keep the comments within, per person, a five to 10-minute comment period. And then at the end of that, we're ready to take a vote and reach a conclusion. So with that as a setting of the table for how we're gonna run this meeting today, again, thanks, everybody, for coming back out on a Saturday. The floor is open for questions. There were some folks who had not gotten all of their questions answered at the last meeting. I'll look for a hand of who would like to start from the governing body this morning. Any takers? Oh, Councilwoman Villarreal, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Good morning, everyone.
You up on the screen?
Yes, you kept forgetting about me on the screen, so I decided to attend in person today.
Works for all of us. Thank you. I'm glad you're feeling better.
Thank you. Just a couple of follow-up questions. And thank you all for joining us again on this beautiful sunny Saturday morning. I just wanted to ask a few things about the area and zoning. So I think first I'll start with, so in looking at the map about, you know, zoning that's contiguous to this area, and we see R2, we see R4s, we also see R2 PUD. So I was wanting to zero in on the R2 PUD, specifically the plazas at Pecos Trail, which is contiguous to this proposed development. And I guess staff would be able to answer the questions that I have related to zoning for plazas at Pecos Trail specifically. So in-
Mayor, Councilors, I think Dan has generally been testifying about his memo and things in the record. But if you want him to talk about just his personal knowledge about the area, is that what you're asking?
This is actually referenced to something that was in the memo.
Okay, great.
Yes. In the memo, it's page six. But yeah, six of 15 in the packet material, in the memo, sorry. So what I was wanting to understand, because we're talking about precedent or different zoning methods in this area, and so, let's see if I could, so I guess maybe you can articulate for me. And you stated it in the memo, but I just want to understand this better. This development has 40 lots. It is on 19 acres. But the calculation that you all did of dwellings per acre, if staff could explain that, it said it's equal to 2.1 dwellings per acre. And then right now, we're looking at 25 dwelling units on this parcel. And the dwelling units per acre came up to be 2.6. So it's not quite different from the plazas at Pecos Trail. So can you explain a little bit how you calculated the 2.1 dwellings per acre?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilor Villarreal, it's a basic math problem. Take the number of dwellings divided by the acres and get the density on the ground.
Maybe you could talk a little bit more into them.
I can hear you in the back.
You basically take the number of dwelling units.
Which was 40.
By the acreage.
Okay.
And you get the density on the ground.
Okay, so the calculations of 40 lots on 19.106 acres comes up to be 2.1 dwellings per acre. And that development was constructed in what year?
I'm not sure when that was actually put into place. I think I got the year, which was 2005, which is on the memo.
Yes, on the memo. Okay, so that was 2005. So what makes, what makes it-
No, this, no, 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 no. Excuse me. Please understand, you don't get to stand up and chip in. Please sit down. I'm sorry, you just don't get to do that. It's not audience participation. I know people are really eager to chime in. The way it works is the council member asks a question of the person at the podium. The person at the podium answers it. If, answer, excuse me, we're gonna have order here today, please. Imagine, as the city attorney said, that for today's purposes, you're in a courtroom, and we are sitting here in a quasi judicial hearing. If a judge is asking questions of a witness, the people who are in the courtroom don't get to chime in. It just doesn't work that way. And we'll be here longer if you do chime in. You may take exception to what's being said. And there may be members of the governing body who will revisit the facts. But it doesn't get to happen with people standing up and offering their testimony unsolicited. So please go back to the question that Councilwoman Villarreal was asking you.
Mayor, Council, Councilor Villarreal, just to understand where my calculations came from, I start from a base use of RGIS records. So our GIS programs allow us to calculate. That is how we determined those values. I wasn't able to get a plat to actually get those values, but I figure since density is plus or minus, it's going to serve our purposes for our calculations.
So the 19 acres that were for this, for plazas, is based on our GIS records?
That's correct. Now, it, yes.
Okay. So what makes a PUD, which is Planned Unit Development zoning, different?
Planned Unit Development, Mayor, Council, Council Villarreal, Planned Unit Development is an overlay. It's an ordinance. It is a zoned ordinance that will allow an applicant to massage some of the development standards typically required by the underlying zoning to something different. So for instance, the Planned Unit Development was able to utilize much of their property for open space and consolidate or aggregate the density into a smaller area, which may have been complicated by required setbacks of each lot. The zoning has specific, very Euclidean-based standards. Five feet from the front, or seven feet from the front, five feet from the sides, 15 feet to the rear. So the PUD would allow that massage of those standards in favor of its new matrix, provided it doesn't go below our minimum standards for health, safety, and welfare.
Thank you. And for the clients of curious, I know that we brought, this question came up at one of the meetings. And so did the applicant consider PUD since there was a precedent across the across the street, essentially?
Good morning, Mayor and City Council Villarreal. The answer to your question was, in the very beginning stages of the design, we did look at the possibility of PUD, but it didn't, we did chose against it. Because in our particular design, we weren't needing variations of the code to meet the requirements. We were able to meet all the minimum requirements for setbacks for everything else that Dan is referring to. We didn't need a deviation from any of the code standards.
Okay, thank you for that. And then so the other question I have is just what the development is thinking for this, for, I guess more for their covenants. And did you say that the homes will not allow for conversions to short-term rentals? Is that going to be expressed in the covenants?
Mayor, Council, I'd have to defer that to the applicant. That is not something that I have control over in the code.
Mayor Weber, Council Villarreal. Discussions about the short-term rental has not really been a subject of discussion. We were just anticipating that our subdivision would follow the same requirements of the Santa Fe City Code as any other property in the city limits. And looked at, should someone want to apply for a short-term rental application, apply to the city as anyone else in the city limits would.
Thank you. From my understanding, developments have actually stated that they're not going to allow short-term rentals. And we've had that provision in the past. It's easy to put it in the covenants. It's not necessarily harder to regulate, but it is something that we've done in the past that development has allowed for prohibition of short-term rentals. And I think that, to me, is a big issue. I think that you all could commit to that. That's an easy one, in my opinion.
Mayor, Council, as an option, if that is an important factor in your deliberation, it is something that you can direct staff to relay to the Planning Commission, so that the Planning Commission during its final plat would be able to take a look at that information and deliberate on what the council wanted.
Okay, thank you.
But we can't put a condition on the ordinance here tonight.
Mayor, Councilors, I was just gonna say, it can be a condition, but you can certainly communicate your interest in that. It shouldn't be part of the motion since it's not at the end.
Thank you for clarifying that. And I have another question, and this is for the applicants or maybe the owners. In considering the design, if if there was an option for you all to be able to consider more affordable housing units as, well, what I would say, a good measure of community equity, you know, I'm happy to see there's affordable units there that are meeting the code requirements. But did you all consider actually increasing the number of affordable units?
Madam, Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, my name is Carl Summer. For the record, I am under oath from the last hearing. Councilor Villarreal, I'm not aware of any conversations related to the increase in the number of affordable units. We did increase the number of the lowest base affordable units. There's, as you know, there are three tiers, and you have to spread them out among the three tiers. We're doing an additional unit at the lowest possible, the lowest required level, where there's only one required. We're doing two there. So that's the only thing that I'm aware of in terms of Mr. Amistoy's discussion about that. We're communicating with him now to see, to ask, I think the question is, is would we consider?
Yes.
We're also communicating with him with your question there about short-term rentals, and hopefully I'll have an answer for you about that. And I agree with the city attorney that you perhaps can't impose it like that. But it is something that the applicant could agree to in his covenants, as he has already agreed to a whole host of things, like single stories, styles, and that sort of thing. So I'll get back to you shortly.
Thank you. I think it's in our best interest to be able to have, well, for one, just a provision that short-term rentals are not allowed, because we keep talking about how this housing, the need for housing, the need for affordable housing, and to then have an ability to have short-term rentals defeats the purpose. So I really just think that that would be an easy consideration or prohibition for this area. Let's see, so. Sure.
Got a quick answer on both of those things. We have no problem, including in our covenants, the commitment that we would not allow for short-term rentals in the neighborhood. And he's not willing to add additional units because of the densities doing 20% already and one at the lowest level. So that answers your question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next next question is, so-
I think Alexander may be able to answer your affordable question.
Miss Ladd, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Villarreal, I just wanted to clarify that the affordable units are never ever allowed to be rented for short-term, long-term, anything. They have to be primary residents. So that's-
Thank you for that reminder. I think that's important. I also would like to see the other market rate ones have the same rules. So we had talked about ADUs, accessory dwelling units, which are allowed to be constructed. And just so you all know, historically, that was spearheaded by former Councilor Peter Ives to be able to allow for ADUs in our city as an affordable option. So I just want to make sure that these properties, once homes are built, they will be able to, they are also allowed to have ADUs, correct?
Mayor, Council, Council Villarreal, if they have the ability to mathematically on the property, given the size of the lot, the open space required, and the lot coverage that the current owner is proposing for each lot, it may or may not work for them, but the option is available if they make sure that their design on that lot includes for what, or accessory dwelling unit.
And in your recollection, do you think that there'll be some units that wouldn't be able to accommodate ADUs?
It's really hard to understand what the design is for each property since they're all custom. So I really couldn't answer that without seeing what they say.
So it depends on the house size, lot coverage, et cetera. Okay. And this is for staff, just so, because I know there was some concern about setting precedents. And there are, I believe the map said there's three three, three more parcels, two on the same side of the subject development, and one on the east side of Old Pecos Trail that are vacant. And I'm just curious if you can let us know if there's been any inquiries or project development plans that have come forth that you are aware of and those adjacent vacant parcels.
Mayor, Councilors, I think this is going to stuff that's outside anything Dan has from his record from the proceedings below. We'd like to go ahead and swear him in.
I, Daniel A. Escobal, residing at, I, Daniel A. Escobal, residing at 1719 Alfred Street. Number E, solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony I have reference to, 22 Old Pecos Trail rezoning shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, and do this under penalties of perjury.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Have there been any inquiries and/or project development plans that have, that you or staff have seen that have come forth in relation to the adjacent vacant parcels in that area?
Mayor, Council, Council Villarreal, that I'm aware of, no.
And would other land use folks have any insight on that?
Mayor, Council, Conserv Villarreal, no, I do not have anything to add.
Thank you. I think those are all my follow-up questions for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Any else looking to clarify things that have not been asked or go over ground that that needs to be covered? Okay, okay, we'll do Council Lindell and then Council Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilor Garcia. Thank you, Councilor Villarreal, for those questions. They were helpful. I think that I have a question to direct a couple of questions to Ms. Moore. Actually, Mayor, am I able to request an audience member to come to the mic? Okay. I'll keep Ms. Moore on deck. And Mr. Throne, you must be in the audience somewhere. I have a question for you.
Could you please silence your phone? Thank you. Just doesn't, we're not looking for names, just please silence your phone. And it's hard to always remember to do it, but please do. Set it to stun or whatever works, so it doesn't, it doesn't make noise. Council Lindell, you have the floor.
Have you been sworn in, Mr. Throne?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I just have a, really, one question in, from Ms. Moore's slide deck. She references in, on December 13th, 2001, correspondence from the Old Santa Fe Trail Neighborhood Association. And it says, "We support the enactment by the City Council of Santa Fe of an ordinance to protect the open scenic character of the Old Pecos Trail entry corridor by means of restrictions on future developments within the corridor, including, but not confined, to R1 through R3 zoning or rezoning." Well, why isn't that valid today?
Mayor, Councilor Lindell, thank you for asking that question. And first, let me say, I was here at the last meeting, although I saw the slideshow and some information put on there for the first time by Ms. Moore when she presented her history. I don't remember this specific letter that you're referring to, but I was a personal participant, as the staff knows, as the staff knows, in the public participation process called for in the implementing policy regarding the old Pecos Trail scenic corridor that Counselor Chavez actually read aloud at last the July 11th meeting. So, and actually, one of the exhibits to my December 2nd comments has the minutes from one of those meetings, which explains not only why I was there, and one of the reasons was because it says right in there that the city attorney's office at the time did not have anybody with any legal experience to help draft and help counselors Heldmeyer, former counselor Heldmeyer, or Counselor Chris Moore, who were involved in that. They didn't have anybody to do the drafting. And so I personally participated in this, unlike, by the way, Ms. Moore or any of the staff witnesses that you've heard from so far in any of these hearings. And one of the reasons why I was there was specifically because contrary to what the applicant has stated in the, it's March 21st, 2022 application report and staff's reports, the planning commission, and even in the staff's memo, the city council in, when they approved the general plan on April 14th, 1999, and that's city resolution 1999-45, the city council did not designate a density specifically for this section of Opekko's Trail of R3 to R7. And there's a number of ways you know that. One is because it says that right at page 3-12 of the general plan that Counselor Chavez read at the last meeting. And that was a, that was there because Counselor, former Counselor Moore actually, and in the minutes to that meeting, which unfortunately I provided to the city clerk, I provided to the city attorney, I provided to staff and asked on January 3rd that they add to your packet without any further commentary from me. So you would see that. That confirms that the designation of three to seven dwelling units per acre on that south section of Opekko's Trail, that is between St. Michael's Drive and I-25, that came from the planning department. Reed Liming was the individual. And, and so I knew because I participated in that process that contrary to what's been argued to you over and over again, the city council never made that designation. In fact, what they did was exactly what the general plan says. It said, no, what we're going to do, you know, and there's a general infill policy argument there you have in the general plan. There's a general policy in favor of affordable housing. But there is something more specific in the general plan. That's implementing policy 3-I-9. It's right in there. And, you know, there's a general rule of interpretation of rules and laws. It says, you know, when you have something specific, it prevails over the general. And that says specifically on this particular area, because of its value to the community, we're going to have this public participation process. And as part of that process, we're going to develop density and other development standards. And then we're going to bring that back to the governing body. And, and then we'll codify that in the land use plan. And we all know that that has not been done to date. So now getting back to specifically your question, so there I was, and I think I'm the only person with personal knowledge of this under oath, and I'm doing this subject to perjury, that knows that, why was I there discussing density with other people? And why was I helping draft or other, and by the way, it was all volunteer. I put many, many hours volunteering to do that. This is 22 years ago. 22 years ago. It's because we, we knew that the council had not made the designation. They had this policy. And so one of the things that was discussed and it's reflected in those minutes is for this entire corridor, and you know, the corridor is defined from Port of a Road to I-25. What should be, what should be the density there? And it was a lot of discussion by a lot of different people and not just the neighborhoods in Salley, Lomas are right next to it. These were people all along the corridor. And the discussion was what kind of density should we be proposing to your predecessor, the governing body? Or as part of this process? And one of the things that was discussed was, should it be what staff wanted, what staff put into the future land use map without any approval of the city council? Three to seven dwelling units per acre, or should it be something less? My, what happened in that, in those meetings was consensus was it should be protected and the density should be in the range of one to three dwelling units per acre. This gets to the letter that you're apparently referring to, which by the way, I don't think is in the record, which means you can't rely on it as a quasi judicial body, but, but I'm more than happy to address that because that density, the idea was not to be didactic to the governing body and say, no, it has, all has to be R1. And I know there's a lot of, I believe, maybe perhaps you and other people have made comments that R1 is not sustainable here throughout the city. And that isn't the argument that's being made here. But the point was, should that group acting responsibly have, they did propose to former Counselor Heldmeyer, it's right in those minutes. Yeah, we're okay with, with going ahead back to you as a governing body, the people who sat in your chairs and saying it should be one to three, and that should be the discussion. Now, does that mean at the end of the day, it's one, is two or three? No, what it means is, once you've established that, then developers, anybody who wants to develop anything of property within this corridor, they come back and they come making an application, they tell you, well, we want to put in this, we want to put in perhaps PUD, like, like the plazas did. Because the Chapman family was very sensitive to the Old Pecos Trail scenic corridor. And, and they used the PUD zoning so they could do. What did they do? They specifically set that back so you can barely see any of the homes from Opekko's Trail. And they had to deal with the problem of, well, we're going to have this high density area. How are we going to deal with the 50% open space requirement? That is applicable, it was applicable to the entire South Central Highway Corridor Protection District. That predated this Old Pecos Trail scenic corridor. That wasn't designed to protect this corridor. That was the whole South Central Highway Corridor Protection District. And so what they did, and hats off to the Chapman family, they allowed that higher density. And then they have common open space, almost 20 acres of it. Now, this, if you look at your code under planned unit development, purposes and innovative subdivision design. There's nothing innovative about this subdivision design. They said it's an innovative street design.
Mr. Throne, I ask you a pretty simple question, and you've really gone around the barn on it. And we're going to end up meeting behind the barn here pretty soon.
And Mayor, Councilors, I just want to say one thing. So just as other folks have shown demonstrative aids, if you would like, and certainly I would want to leave this to your discretion, is if you would like to see a document that someone's referencing, you certainly can. But
Do we have?
You do not have to.
Well, I submitted, I submitted that, Mayor and Counselor. January 3rd, I submitted that.
I'm not sure that was addressed to you, sir.
And Mayor, Councilors, yes, we closed the written comment period several weeks ago. But if someone is referring to something during their, their sworn testimony that you would like to see, that is, that is fine.
And Mayor, I said, I actually told Ms. McSherry that I'm happy, I was happy if someone called on me to refer to it, but I felt that the best evidence for you is to read the minutes yourselves. Why should you take my word for it?
That's fine. I think Counselor Lindell had a different question in mind.
Yeah, it's I think that I think that you've given an answer, Mr. Throne, and it wasn't really directed exactly to my question. You went a lot of different places. What I do know is, is that the document from the Old Santa Fe Trail Neighborhood Association stated exactly what I read, which was in the slide deck from Ms. Moore. So, thank you. I don't think I have any other questions for you.
Mr. Mayor, with respect, because, and you have asked us all to be respectful, and I do mean this. The implication of the question, Counselor Lindell, was that somehow I personally, and by the way,
No, it was not.
Agreed to this designation.
No, it was not.
I don't think that's the intent, and I don't think we're, in our council rules, we don't apply intent to other people. They have to speak for themselves. So Counselor Lindell, I think, was simply asking a matter of fact, which was if there was a prior document that was cited by Ms. Moore that said there was a group of neighbors at that time who thought R1 to R3 was acceptable, I'm paraphrasing her question. What made it less acceptable today? It's not, not described to, to you personally. She was simply looking to you as an expert on the subject, so.
And Mayor, with respect, is that document in the record?
Ms. Moore's, I can show you the slide from Ms. Moore's presentation if you'd like to see it.
I would, because I was, you know, it was hard for us.
Ms. Moore, can you pop that up on the screen? I think it is in your slide deck about a date of December 13, 2001.
Wait, point of order. How do you have that?
This slide deck?
Yeah.
I got a print of it.
I was told I couldn't use that, that I had to go to Zoom.
Mayor, I thought I told you to go to Zoom too, but yeah.
Well, I did.
Could have printed it from Zoom, I suppose.
I did both, but.
Okay, I think we need to put that slide on the
Yeah, we are. That's what we're doing.
Up there because my understanding is I couldn't use that slide deck. I had to go to Zoom and re-watch it, which I did not have time to do, and which we'll probably be walking through this painfully because I didn't have time to do it.
Well, I did both, so I apologize if it upset the process. But there is a document in the slide deck that Counselor Lindell was referring to. And it, and her question was simply if, if there is this matter that was recorded, is there a difference in that level today? And I think Mr. Throne answered the question. You still have the floor, Counselor Lindell. We're trying to stick to about a 10-minute to 15-minute per person question period.
I don't think I spoke for 10 minutes, but I think my 10 minutes is up, so.
Well, we can come back around if you do.
That would be fine. I'll yield the floor.
Okay, Counselor Garcia, you are next in line.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And I, you're looking, this was not a letter from me.
Nobody said it was.
I was not with the Old Santa Fe Association.
Fine, that's not the point. You're missing the point, sir. She was simply asking you if you had an opinion based on your deep knowledge of this matter as to why what was, what was acceptable then wouldn't be acceptable now. It's not holding you to account. No, you're not being put on the, on the griddle, sir. This is not holding you to account for the letter or anything since. Okay, Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given that this slide is up on the screen, I do got a quick question for staff regarding this information. So it's stating that the Old Santa Fe Trail Neighborhood Association, which is a private organization, passes a resolution within there are an organization stating their stance on a potential ordinance. Did that, did this ordinance, potential ordinance ever be passed by the governing body?
Mayor, Councilors, Counselor Garcia, I could find no record of an ordinance being presented to the governing body, voted on or passed that referenced, you know, this particular effort to develop an Old Pecos Trail scenic corridor ordinance.
So, quick follow-up to that. Old Santa Fe Trailhood Neighborhood Association resolutions have no impact on city policy. They do not determine city policy.
Mayor, Counselors, Counselor Garcia, no, no, they would not.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that for me, just because I think if they put out a statement saying, we want to zone it to R9, it's not going to change city zoning efforts. Before us, we've got a case where we've really got to look at the criteria and does the applicant meet the criteria for proposed approval? And so with that, I want to focus on the criteria a little bit. So in our packet on page five, it starts with criteria one. And
Sorry, Counselor, which, which document in our packet? There's, there's a number of them. Are you on the memo?
Staff memo.
Thank you.
So within criteria one, there is three sections. Section one, there was a mistake in the original zoning. And in the applicant's response, there is, the response is, there is not a true mistake. And in staff response, there was not a mistake. So in my humble opinion, that criteria is not met. Now, when we get into criteria two and three is where it gets a little murky. Criteria two, there has been a change in the surrounding area altering the character of the neighborhood to such an extent as to justify the changing of the zoning. So the applicant's response refers to the land use map, the future land use map. And staff's response refers to that as well. I'd like to get, and I think it was good that Mr. Throne was up here testifying earlier regarding some of the information he has been able to discover during his intensive research. So, Mr. Throne, I have a question for you. Mr. Throne, as you stated, you've done a lot of research on this. You've been involved in this process dating back to the early 2000s. You provided us with a heap of information, in particular, why you feel certain criteria was not met. So can you help me understand why you feel criteria number two was not met?
Yes, Mayor and Counselor Garcia, thank you. Yeah, second criteria, as you know, and I'll just do it from memory, is whether or not there's been a change in condition in the surrounding areas such as to justify the proposed zoning change. And if you were to look at the applicant, the applicant's application report of March 21, 2022, you'll see that the applicant isn't relying on that. There was no evidence, factual evidence supporting that. And further, if you look at the developments that have occurred in the plazas being the most significant of them, it was PUD, R2 PUD was done, that did not create a change in the surrounding area such that that would justify the straightforward non-PUD R3 zoning requested here. Even, even if you look at Quail Run, which is R4, you can, and this is one of the reasons why back in September, we requested a site visit just to, you know, don't take our word for it. Go out there and take a look. You can drive that, and I'm sure you all have. You can drive by there. You can't see virtually any of the homes there from the road, and you can see tiny bits of it. So that was very respectful of that corridor. So there was no change there and, and, but, but if you look closely at both the staff's July 21st, 2022 report to the Planning Commission, and also the staff's December 14 memo to you, you'll see that on that second criteria, staff kind of gets off the criteria. And what staff says is, there is a conflict or a mismatch between the current R1 zoning under our zoning code, which is existing law, and the designation specifically approved by the city council when it approved the general plan of three to seven dwelling units per acre for this south section of Opekko's Trail. And that's what I was referring to before when I was responding to Counselor Lindell's question is that designation was not made by the governing body. That designation was made by the planning division, Reed Liming. It's reflected in those minutes that I referred to. Now, we all know that the, you know, with, with respect, planning department doesn't make policy, they don't make plans. It's, it's the governing body. And the governing, so, 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 so it doesn't meet the second criteria, and then they get to the third criteria.
Right. And so with that being said, let me jump into that and regards to the future land use map, I do have a question for you regarding that. So that, there'll be an opportunity for you to go much more in-depth if you like regarding future land use map here in a moment. The third criteria, sorry, I'm trying to scroll back up through the document, is a different use of category is more advantageous to the community as articulated in the general plan or other adopted city plans. And so again, future land use map is referenced here, staff decision, staff recommendation reference references policy. Can you, you, in your written comments to us, and I guess because of time, Can you, in your written comments to us, and I guess because of time, can you briefly state why you believe that criteria three was not met?
Yes, the key phrase in there is, as articulated in the general plan or other city plans. So first you have to look at, when you're, and I think even the mayor referred to the fact that we're looking at costs versus benefits of this, you're weighing advantages. Is it more advantageous to the community? And I certainly agree that community, referring to the community at large. It's not Soli Lomis or any one neighborhood. And I agree with staff on that. We have from the get-go. So looking at that, the question then becomes, well, what does the general plan articulate? Again, Counselor Chavez read what it articulates. Now, if you look at those minutes carefully, yes, the governing body, or called the City Council in those days, yes, they said they were going to adopt a future land use that was future land use map that had been developed by staff that was presented at that meeting. But they said, however, we're also going to designate the Ol' Pecos Trail Scenic Corridor. That was Counselor Moore made that motion. Motion was accepted as a friendly amendment by the City Council. And then there are further comments by other counselors talking about the fact that there were inconsistencies, some of them intentional, says in the minutes, some of them not intentional, between the general plan and that future land use map that staff had developed, and that that would have to be addressed in future meetings. Now, when getting to really the crux of your question, why doesn't it meet that category? Commissioner Inohos Fall, in the Planning Commission, she hit the nail right on the head. She called up Mr. Summer, and she said, first of all, which criteria are you relying on in this case? Mr. Summer acknowledged that was that third criteria, the more advantage, more advantageous to the community as articulated in the general plan. And then she said, well, let's talk about what's going to be provided here. You've got 20 market homes. She asked Mr. Summer, what do you think those homes are going to cost in that area? And he said, well, I don't know for sure, but probably in the $700,000 to $1 million range, which I think is probably accurate, just based on what I read going on in town generally, let alone in that area of town. And her comment about that was, well, how is that going to benefit existing members of this community? And I don't want to, that was her question. She questioned that, those advantages. Then you get to the five affordable housing units. Now, this is not an argument against affordable housing. I don't, I mean, you've heard other people, Mr. Bell and others, talk about, yeah, we need affordable housing in this town. But you weigh, are the advantages of five affordable housing lots, none of which, by the way, have been identified in the record at all by the applicant to date, even though we asked for that during the early neighborhood notification meetings. We had three of them started in December, and then there was one in January, possibly one in February. We specifically said, which of these lots, by the way, are going to be the affordable housing lot? Because some of them are less than 16% of an acre, and they adjoin the Foothills Arroyo, which is a designated FEMA floodplain area. And we wanted to know, and the answer we got from the applicant's team, what Ms. Nataoya was, well, all we know they won't be those lots along the Arroyo because we think those are the most, going to be the most attractive lots for market rate lots. But we never got an answer to that question. So, that's one of the reasons why, is the five affordable housing lots that have yet been unidentified, that outweighed the advantages, the disadvantages of this zoning, which, by the way, and I must respectfully disagree with something that the city attorney said about when the mayor said, will this be a precedent? Well, of course it will be a precedent. And the reason is, look at that second criteria that you read. The criteria says if there's a change in the surrounding area to justify this change, that's a basis for city approval. And of course, a developer, there's four-point acres of land advertised for the last year and a half. The sign's still up, available for sale, right next to it, just south of the subject property, seven acres across the street. Of course, that, you know, they're just waiting to see, so.
Mr. Throne, I think you're getting off-topic from the question.
Sorry.
So with that, let me go ahead and move on, just because my time is limited in this round to my next question, and it's dealing with criterion three. And that is on page 10 of our memo. And I think this is where it brings about some great concern for me. This one states, the rezoning is consistent with the applicable policies of the general plan, including the future land use map. So the way I read this, it kind of breaks up into two parts. The applicable policies of the general plan. And as it's been confirmed earlier, the general plan doesn't really have any policies. The policy stated in the general plan is development standards include land use density and design controls will be developed through a public participation process, which hasn't come to fruition. We now have land use map that has been identified, that identifies that the properties, and the land use map in this case has been dated 2003, that designates proposed zone uses for this property. My concern comes about that, I think it's, we haven't been able to find record that this land use map has been approved by City Council. And I guess my question to you, Mr. Throne, is because you, in your comments to us, you submitted an IPRA request to us requesting any documentation, anything regarding justification that this land use map was approved by City Council, thus making it city policy. Am I correct in that reading of your comments? That through your IPRA request, there was no documentation on the record found?
Yes, Mayor and Counselor Garcia. I did, I think, four or five, I know it's in my exhibits, IPRA requests. We're all looking for, where is the April 1999 future land use map? Ms. Lilis, who has testified previously, and give her a tremendous amount of credit, was intrepid in her research. And this is, by the way, before we even found the minutes, the minutes to the meeting, because that was never disclosed to any of us. It was just Ms. Lilis uncovered it, to her credit. But on the map, on the future land use map, it was never produced. But what I was told by Ms. Lilis that about three or four days before the first council hearing on December 14, and I think there was some reference by Ms. Moore to this, they had finally found in a box somewhere, they had found in a box, a map that was dated April 1999 that showed that designation. Now, you recall Ms. Lilis testified, well, if you look at the general plan posted online, it's a folded map, you couldn't read any of it. So we kept asking for it and asking for it. I don't know if that's been put in the record. I remember Ms. Moore referring to that. But all that showed, that just aligns exactly with what the minutes show, is that that's the map that the planning department developed. There's no, we asked over and over again, is there any City Council resolution? After April 1499, and the general plan was approved, it says, we're now approving all these density designations in this particular future land use map. And every response we got back, I think the custodian's name is Ms. Whiting, as I recall, no, we couldn't find any. The only thing that they pointed to was city resolution 1999-45, which is the one passed by the City Council on that, on April 1499, that adopted the general.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Throne. So I want to be respectful of my colleagues in it. So staff, can you confirm any information for me regarding during the passage of the 1999 general plan, the resolution that approved it? Was there any maps part of that package? I mean, can you help me untangle all of this? Because from the documentation that Mr. Throne submitted, I don't see evidence that any map was approved by the City Council. So can you help clarify for me through any legislation that the City Council approved that there would be documentation showing the proposed rezoning of the Ol' Pecos Trail Corridor?
Mayor, Counsel, Counselor Garcia, there's a lot in that question. I think for the most part, I cannot confirm what they presented to the governing body at the adoption of the 99 general plan. I do know that it was Counselor Boucher, after a recommendation was made to adopt the 1990 general plan, added a friendly amendment, which was accepted by the person who made the motion and went through. There's no actual discussion about the Ol' Pecos Trail Corridor within the minutes that we received from Mr. Throne. In terms of the map itself, the general plan includes that map as an exhibit identified as figure 32. Within that map, it does identify those zoning parameters at the time were accepted and adopted. Currently, we don't use the old general plan because it's been digitized. That's why it was folded. Whoever ran it through the scanner at the time probably didn't have a large enough scanner, so they just provided, and this is an assumption, so I don't know the facts here. But however it was folded, it was folded. The original, we have an original document that we found because Greg Smith, like me, doesn't throw anything away. Therefore, our offices are usually a disaster. And those that have been in my office understand that theory. I may have a problem, okay? However, we did find that because I remembered that Greg had a lot of old codes from time to time, so that we can refer back to them to identify what those changes were. I spoke to Maggie, and I said, can you look at the back of your office? Greg put all of those, or Noah put all of Greg's old books when he retired in his office. And I said, can you look to see if there's an old general plan there? There was. When we opened it up, the map was in there. The original map that was adopted as part of this general plan, identifying that the council did adopt, as part of this general plan, a density of load, a load density requirement for this area. That's what the council wanted because they adopted that map as part of the overall and global approval of this general plan. Now, in terms of the Ol' Pecos Trail, was the Ol' Pecos Trail put on there? Yes, it is in the old map. The Ol' Pecos Trail is highlighted to identify that from point A, Cordova Road, and point B, I-25, Ol' Pecos Trail is designated as a scenic corridor. And it is further requested of staff to develop rules and regulations to identify how development across that area would be achieved. There were three attempts, as outlined by my colleague. And however they failed, they failed. I was not part of that process, and the administration that was then pushing them are no longer here, so I can't really ask them and to find out what happened. You heard from Noah, that was the only thing.
Thank you, Mr. Escobillo. I've been warned that we've hit my mark and exceeded some, so thank you so much for your testimony. I just find it very concerning that we, as a city government, don't have proper archivial standards to quickly go back and see what was approved through such a significant legislative piece of legislation, such as the general plan. For something to say, let's find it, and it just mysteriously pops up, that should be something we should just quickly go back into our archives and say, here is what was in front of the governing body, here is what was approved. I know it was a different day and age where we had binders of thousands of pages and whatnot, but it causes me concern that we don't have proper documentation regarding what was actually in front of the governing body or the City Council at that time when they approved it. And we don't have that concrete evidence that says that, such as we would in today's pack of materials. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have two short questions after my colleagues do have.
We'll come back around. Counselor Mereworth, and then Counselor.
I'm sorry, before.
Yes, sir.
My speaker's coming up. I think we've had some people leave, and we have a handful of people who've been standing for over an hour. Can we ask for another show of hands if people have an open seat next to them, so that someone who's been standing can sit?
If you really, yeah, or if you'd like.
There's two seats here in the front row.
Or if you'd like to take a stint standing and let somebody have your seat. We can change around, because it is, we're going to be at this for a while.
All right, we tried. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Give people a chance to sit if they need a place to sit. I will go to Counselor Mereworth, and then Counselor Cassett, and then see who else has questions. Counselor Mereworth, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Summer, can you outline for us what this development would look like under R1? If the zoning change were not adopted, what kinds of things would happen on this property if it were developed at R1?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Romano-Worth, we haven't done a plan, but I will attempt to answer your question.
Yeah, just kind of like.
I think the roadways would look almost identical. The lots would be much larger. They would be one-acre lots instead of the smaller lots that you see here. But the access to these lots would probably be the same. And the reason being is because in order to access it in any other way, you'd have to come off of Zia Road, and you would have to cross the Arroyo there, which is preserved or not to be crossed. So I would submit to you that the lots would be bigger. The roadways would be probably almost identical.
And the setbacks?
The setbacks.
Under R1?
Under R1, the setback is still 75 feet from the right-of-way of the Ol' Pecos, well, I guess that's the Ol' Pecos Trail there. And that's by virtue of the South Central Highway Corridor. So you'd have that setback. And I believe you've had interpretation, the staff's interpretation, what that means. So there's no, no one's going to build within that setback. And it deals with structures and fences. And then in the lots, you would have the normal R1 setbacks for lots. On the lot itself, there would have to be a 50% open space requirement. And that 50%, so if you have one-acre lots, 50% of that would be roughly, what is that? 21,000 square feet would be open space. And then of the lot itself, only 40% of the lot could be for lot coverage. So 40% of an acre is the area that could be covered by structures. And then within the, so I'm dividing it this way, Counselor. 50% open space, 40% max lot coverage, leaving 10% for you to do the rest or whatever you're going to do on that lot. That's how those lots would roughly be designed and built out. There would be probably no 25-foot setback from the, yeah, from the adjoining lot lines of the subdivision. This does include a 25-foot setback over on that side. And that's on the, I guess it would be the west side of this property. So there probably wouldn't be a 25-foot setback that is included here. That would be gone. These houses would not be restricted in height or style, so they could go to 25 feet. And they could be whatever style is allowed by the code. So I hope I'm answering your question.
Yeah, thank you. All right, I have limited time, so I'm going to do rapid fire here. Yeah. I want to go back now to, and I think this is a question for Mr. Escobillo. So we get the R3, R1, what is it? R1 through R3 through the adoption of the general plan and supposedly the adoption of the future land use map that Counselor Garcia was just talking about. R3 to R7, okay, sorry.
Sorry, can you repeat that again, please?
So where do we get the idea that this zoning that's being requested is okay under our current city documents?
Mayor, Counsel, Counselor Romano-Worth.
So as part of the requirements that we outlined within the zoning request.
Can you, can you get a little closer to the mic, please?
As far as the, the zoning requirements outline findings that have to be met. One of those findings has to be a consistency with the general plan and future land use map. So it doesn't identify what that consistency is. It just says there has to be a consistency. So, you know, in some of our cases, we've seen one house because of an R two designation and the lot size will only yield based on the acreage, an additional house. Or in this case, you're going to get, uh, nineteen additional houses, five of which will be affordable housing. The general plan identifies what the will of the council and govern, or governing body was at the time specifying how the city is to be developed. So I think of that as the master puzzle piece for the city of Santa Fe. Where you have C two, R one, R three, a whole host of different zoning categories that the governing body has identified as what they wanted and how they wanted the city to develop. So when that future, when that rezoning request comes in, we look to that general plan, future land use map to identify whether or not they're consistent with that policy. Or they have to request a general plan amendment in order to modify the future land use map so that they can request the zoning that they need in order to be consistent with that future land use map. And you've seen that many, many times before. So that's how we process the application and how this application was processed and how we evaluate this case and assess it against the general plan and future land use map to get that R three to R seven designation. Um, and for the R three zoning to be consistent with the future land use map for us to be able to recognize that it's compatible.
So the general plan and the future land met, the future land use map are kind of the, they set the standard. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So then when we turn to the Old Pecos Trail overlay, that's also in the general plan. And it was in the original future land use map when it was adopted.
Yes.
Okay. And then we have heard that the current version of the future land use map isn't the same as the future land use map that was adopted by the council back in nineteen ninety-nine. So how did, how did that change happen if we're the ones who are supposed to approve it?
Mayor, Council, Counselor Romarworth. The future land use map and the designation of that map identifies as it's written, two points, Cordova Road and I twenty-five, and it also identifies Old Pecos Trail. Within that one paragraph, it doesn't expand outward into any other piece of property aside from two points and Old Pecos Trail. All we did was correct the map to reference exactly how it was articulated within the general plan. Because we believe that that was a map error and we have the authority to correct map errors as we see them because there are abundant map errors.
Okay. And the map error you corrected was what exactly? You just articulate that again for me.
The, the correction that we made was to graphically represent how we believe it is written within the general plan so that it couldn't be further misconstrued and utilized as something it's not.
So you just said, so basically you designated it in length, not in width.
That's correct.
And the reason you didn't identify it in width is because no corridor plan has been adopted by this council suggesting what the widths should be.
That's correct.
And in the original document, was there width?
Well, it did identify a hatch area that incorporated a very large amount of properties within it. But it, like I said, there's no ordinance that actually identify what that width is in the Old Pecos Trail along the.
Or, or, or what it isn't for that matter, correct?
Well, it does say Old Pecos Trail, which gives us the only reference to width, which is the right of way. Uh, if you look at the Old Pecos, the South Central Highway Corridor, the South Central Highway Corridor is written in the same vein. However, the ordinance does articulate that width. It tells us how far to go from the right of way outward, which properties are affected by that and what the standards that we have to apply to each and every one of those properties that are affected by those boundary, boundary widths articulated within the ordinance. I don't have the ability to force an applicant to meet an ordinance that doesn't exist uh, in order for me to process that application. I, I don't have that kind of authority.
Okay. And I don't know who this question is for, whether it's for you or the city attorney's office. Um, maybe it's for both. The third criteria, a different use category is more advantageous to the community as articulated in the general plan or other adopted city plans. Is that an objective or subjective standard?
Mayor, Council, uh, Counselor Romarworth, I think that the entire general plan is somewhat subjective in terms of how we, how it's used. It doesn't really have any teeth like an ordinance does. So you have to apply a consistency across the board as, as been, uh, as policies are developed through administration and administration so that we can actually regulate properties equitably, equally and consistent across the board. So the approach that we take is that consistency that you've seen so many times across the board, whether we recommend approval or denial, um, uh, for in order to meet our goals. So as I said earlier, the general plan does not have a, an item that says every single piece of legislation within this reg, this legislation has to be, uh, accepted. Oh, I think the attorney wants to talk to them.
Yeah, I think the city attorney's office wants to weigh in there.
Mayor, counselors, um, that criteria is fairly subjective. There's, there's no real criteria other than it goes to the governing body to decide if it is more advantageous to the community.
And Mayor, Counselors, I'd add to that. So certainly the word advantageous is subjective. It would be good to attach the advent advantages that you find or don't find to things that are in city policy, which also may be subjective in themselves, um, but they exist.
Okay. So we've heard that, and I think Counselor Cassett walked us through the last meeting about some of the things that, uh, you know, affordable, the general plan talks about affordable housing. It talks about infill. Um, I think Mr. Throne has pointed out in his documents that whether this property was dealt, developed in its current zoning or in what it's being asked to be zoned at, it would still be in full, infill. It would just be a different density. But the general plan also, uh, talks about, you know, adoption of a scenic corridor and in two different spots. And we also have a resolution that says that that is something that the community found to be advantageous that, um, and I want to find scrolling through here, I think there are specific places where we talk about you know, network of open spaces, future land use illustrates a network of open space along the Arroyos that will be realized over time and smaller parks within neighborhoods. I think somewhere, uh, the corridor protection area between urban and rural uses to prevent sprawl and delineate clearly the boundary between urban and rural areas. Future land use shows a corridor protection area between urban and rural uses along Veterans Memorial High, Highway and Interstate twenty-five. This isn't actually going to help me. The hillsides to the east will result in a natural boundary between urban and rural development. There's somewhere in here and I can't put my finger on it, so maybe I'll come back. Um, about basically, uh, the, the idea that we also want to see open space, that we also value, um, uh, that we need to balance. And I, I don't know, uh, Mr. Escobal, if you can put your finger on what I'm looking for, um, maybe I'll come back so that I I had it. After three, page three. Maybe I'll come back. I'll let somebody else go. Let me find what I was looking for.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Back around. Counselor Cassett.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, just to confirm, this is the general plan and the future land use map that has essentially been used to help dictate, dictate every land use decision we've been making since nineteen ninety-nine. Am I correct in that?
Mayor, Council, Counselor Cassett, that is correct.
Okay. And I do understand that there was a change made to because of width of a, of Old Pecos Trail corridor had not been identified. Can staff just change zoning, future zoning designations without adoption by the governing body?
Mayor, Council, Counselor Cassett, we, we do correct errors of those maps that happen. It's not uncommon that a drafting error has occurred and we have to correct those drafting errors to reflect what the governing body has actually adopted. But we use the text in terms of that because when you have those human errors, especially when you're drafting by hand like they did in nineteen ninety-nine, you have several people who touched those maps. And it's not uncommon that zoning, zoning occurs right through a house when it wasn't supposed to. The zoning does require it to follow property lines. So we have to go from time to time, look to determine whether or not it was a map error or whether or not it was actually adopted that way by the governing body. And through our analysis, we either bring it back to the governing body to correct that map in its two, you know, based on what was adopted. Or we correct that map error in the general plan that was corrected for the corridor. We corrected it relevant to how the text reads as opposed to how the drafter interpreted that highlight along that road because that's technically what it was. It was a highlight to identify that area of concern, but it didn't include properties. So we reflected it correctly as it was written so that it wouldn't be misunderstood as actual boundaries within that text. Those boundaries have not been adopted yet by this governing body.
Correct. I, I'm more, uh, looking at the assertion that nine point, what is this? What's the total? Nine point five, thank you, acres, um, could be designated as three to seven by staff without confirmation from their approval from the governing body on the future land use map. That is not.
That is, that we would not make that error. That is, we, we do go into that. There are some mismatches throughout the city of Santa Fe, but where the governing body wanted a change in that area. Now they didn't go back and rezone that property, but what they did was they changed the future land use.
That was the governing body's work, correct?
From a higher density to a lower density. You can find those changes throughout the city. Uh, there are also, there are also additional amendments. If you look at the Old Pecos Trail in just further down, it's zoned R one. It's a commercial use. The future land use map identifies it as general commercial. Nobody has come forward to make that actually general commercial. I think that would be another fight as you have here. But, um, uh, there are, there are a lot of them. This was not one that we found as an anomaly. It is ingrained within the general plan through all the maps that we've, that we've got, including one of the originals that we found that identified that our drafters did get it right. It is not erred.
Okay, thank you. Um, I also want to make sure that we, um, maybe let's take, take our numbers away and go to our categories. So we have very low density residential. We have low density residential. Me, and then it goes, goes on and on. R three sits on the border between very low density residential and low density residential. Currently in the R one zoning, it is very low density residential. And this development, because it's actually going to be two point six and not three, still firmly sits in the very low density residential. And I, am I understanding the categories of zoning correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not actually jumping category.
Um, that's true. It, it, it would meet the R, the very low density category. The only problem with that is that if they were to actually come in with an R two zoning request, because the general plan has already identified this as low density, starting at R three. In order to get to R two, we'd have to require them to change the future land use map to reflect the R two zoning uh, to very low density in order for them to get an R two designation.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, so the scenic corridor, is there an official definition for what scenic means anywhere within the general plan with a, you know, what, what does a scenic corridor mean?
I have not looked at that. I'm sorry.
Okay. Does anybody know if we actually have a definition for scenic?
Mayor, Counselor, not in the code.
Okay, thank you. And when was the South Central Highway Corridor adopted? I'm so sorry, remind me.
Mayor, uh, Council, Counselor Cassett. From my reading, it was, uh, when they were adopting the ninety-nine general plan, this one, Counselor Boucher, after they made a motion to accept it, Counselor Boucher actually asked a, for a friendly amendment to include this designation for this particular area. It was accepted by Counselor Moore.
I'm sorry, for the South Central Highway, not.
Oh, the South Central.
Yeah. Cause I know South Central Highway Corridor includes this area. So was that adopted after, before?
I according to, uh, all they get was before the general plan, the eighties.
Thank you, thank.
Mayor, Counselor, but it was amended after the general plan as well with further restrictions specifically in this area. The seventy-five foot setback was in two thousand and eleven.
Interesting. Specifically in this area, so not including the rest of it. It was Old Pecos Trail got called out, um, in the South Central Highway Corridor.
Mayor, Counselor, that's correct.
And what were the changes that were made specifically to Old Pecos Trail as opposed to you said, the seventy-five foot setback? Anything else?
Mayor, Counselor, there may have been other changes. That one specifically happened in two thousand and eleven.
Okay.
That's according to, it was two thousand and ten.
Thank you.
We also have additional changes to the overall because we, the governing body has made changes for a hotel along St. Francis Drive that carved it out.
Right.
Along with Sawmill Road.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, so I know what we are voting on today is really rezoning. We're not, we don't, you know, the development approval, that's down at the planning commission, but we do have a bit of an opportunity to explore. Um, if this passes, what we would, um, talk to, you know, maybe send back to planning commission is what we would like them to consider. I know part of the concern, again, how do we balance this, uh, need for housing and this need for a scenic Santa Fe? And it honestly is, is a, it's a a constant conversation in almost everything that we do. You know, how do we build the future that we need while honoring the, the past that we love? Um, and it's complicated. In regards to this development, um, Orlin, this might be a question for you. What is the grade of the property and how the houses sit and what that, that means compared to the visual impact from the road?
Um, Mayor Commissioners, um, the, the grades are pretty gentle on this property. They're all generally less than ten percent except right next to the Arroyo.
Excuse me, just for the record, can you identify yourself?
Sorry, I'm Orlin Cadet Ortiz and I was formally sworn.
I think part of the question is in reference to the grade of Old Pecos Trail.
Correct. Thank you.
Second question, yeah. Um, the, uh, a, a good portion of the property adjacent or closest to Old Pecos Trail sits lower than Old Pecos Trail. And if I recall correctly, it, it, it's as low as, um, eight feet lower.
Eight feet lower. So the visual.
It rises, you know?
Okay. So it'll kind of vary throughout the, the property. Okay. Thank you. Um, Mr. Escobal, this might be a question for you. Um, there are landscaping opportunities that I, or, you know, kind of options, designs that people, other developments have used to really shield developments. Um, what options might there be here?
Uh, Mayor, Council, Counselor Cassett, as part of the planning commission review and. Uh, Mayor Council, Counselor Cassidy, as part of the planning commission review and approval, they did require, and it was a staff condition, that additional landscaping be placed within that 75 foot setback. The applicant did agree with that. So those, there will be more landscaping there than there is today.
Okay. And.
That 75 foot.
Along that 75 foot.
Obviously there are going to be trees that are going to be removed where houses are going to sit. But in terms of what's along that 75 foot setback, the applicant will be placing those trees that are being targeted as significant and placing them into that 75 foot setback. If those trees are, are destroyed by any means, they will then have to replace them according to the code.
Okay. And is there any, is there anything else that can be considered? Okay, I, I apparently, or I'm going to move on from this. Um, that is something that I would, uh, you know, if this were to pass, that, um, would like to send down to the planning commission is to really take a look at what some of those options are for landscaping. Uh, I apologize. This is a little bit all over the place as it's follow-up questions. Um, I do want to discuss traffic again, uh, for a moment. And looking at historical traffic counts on Old Pecos Trail, I know that there is a conversation that generally traffic in this area has decreased over the last 10 years. And is that information for along Old Pecos Trail or is that other parts of this vicinity? And Mr. Pacheco, thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you. Come back up and, uh, for the record, identify yourself and then you may need to hear the question repeated. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm Leroy Pacheco. I'm working with Regina Wheeler, Public Works Traffic. I'm also, I mean, I think Mike Gomez is here who might need to speak to this as well. I heard your question. Um, the state uh, MPO organization measures traffic all over town and traffic is decreasing in this corridor. It is flat.
It's flat. Okay.
Yeah. So we have records. I mean, it's, it may be in the record, but there are records that can indicate what the traffic volumes, uh, over the last 10, 15 years have been.
And how does this compare to, say, gosh, what would be a comparable? I don't know, St. Francis. I mean, Camino Carlos Rey is not supposed to be comparable, but honestly, at this point, it kind of is. Um, so how, how is that, um, really looking throughout the city?
Okay. Well, I think one way to think about this is when you're looking at a development like this, we, we use the same criteria all over town. There's no different criteria any, applied anywhere else. And so for instance, um, this particular development, which is, I think, in terms of its traffic measurement, let me find it. And pardon me, I'm a little bit.
No worries. It's a Saturday.
Yeah.
You're off Saturday brain.
So, um, when we, when you look at traffic, just comparing the citywide to recent developments that have been considered by the planning commission and council, uh, one of the issues that has come up is the timing of the traffic counts. The, uh, traffic was counted at this particular location approximately around the same time that traffic was counted for Christa St. Vincent's, the Bartolo Apartments, um, on Sirius Road at Soli, uh, at Soletas, uh, the roof, the South Meadows Development for Rufina Clark, uh, et cetera. So the timing of the traffic is comparable to what's been taken all over town. With respect to this particular development and its impact to the infrastructure at this location, and again, let me, here it is. This particular development will. Here we are. Thank you for your patience, all of you. Okay. So, uh, this particular development is going to generate at West Zia, five cars in the morning in the peak hour and seven cars in the evening in the peak hour. And at, uh, Old Pecos Trail, 18 cars in the morning and 20 cars in the peak hour. So that's when you're looking at the worst case time of what's happening to this road, this is the additional impact that this particular development will generate. Um, just as in comparison, the Rufina South Meadows project.
We talked about.
Morning peak hour is going to generate 115 additional cars.
That, if you, that's not the future South Meadows. We probably shouldn't talk about.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that's on.
Not, let's, let's.
I don't think you can go there.
I, I guess, but back to, okay. So your, your question was specifically, your question was specifically the traffic counts on, on Old Pecos Trail and its history. That, that exists. It's, um, volume is flat. It's noted in the TIA. And Mike, you have that information in the TIA that, which I don't have in front of me, but it is flat.
It's flat. Okay.
It's not growing in that area.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I appreciate that. Um, I will, I'll yield the floor for now. Thank you.
We can come back around. Uh, Counselor Chavez.
Mayor Reverend, can I just correct from earlier? It was bill number 2010-11 that I was referencing. I knew there was an 11 in there. So I apologize for the number confusion.
Thank you. Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. I have brief questions, follow-up questions, just to some questions that my colleagues asked. One of my colleagues asked the applicant, the impacts if zoning was reduced. And one of the things I, it's obvious to me, this answer, but I would just want to hear from you. What impact would that have on affordable housing?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Counsel Chavez, the impact on affordable housing would be on this development. There would be no onsite affordable housing and the developer would pay a, a fee based on whatever this, the, the, the standards are at the time.
Thank you. Um, the next question I have is around criteria three. Um, so let me get there. Sorry. The rezoning is cons, and this is going to be for city staff. The rezoning is consistent with applicable policy, applicable policies of the general plan, including the future land use map. The word applicable, I want to go to because we did say that the general plan is often subjective. So when I think of applicable, I think of applicable, applies to the case at hand, but also ties to city code. Right? We would want there to be a correlation of the application to the general plan, but then also city code that backs up or defines more clearly what is stated in the general plan. So for example, here, cause I know I asked earlier, why wasn't there a general plan amendment? We don't have city code that would justify a general plan amendment, correct?
Uh, Mayor, Councilors, Madam Chair, Councilors, uh, Counselor Chavez, if they're requesting to comply with the future land use map, there would not be a general plan needed.
Okay. Um, and so if, I want you to just expand for me a little bit on criteria three. Um, and I just want to hear it one more time from you. How do we feel the applicant met this criteria?
Are you talking about criteria one, item three, or criteria?
Criteria three.
So the rezoning is consistent with the applicable policies of the general plan, including the future land use map? Is that, uh, the one you're talking about? Um, again, as I went over in my, in, in my presentation, together with what the applicant presented to us as their application, um, we believe that affordable housing, infill, all of those other items that have been rattled off here throughout the night, throughout the day in past, along with what the governing, along with what the planning commission identified within their findings of facts. Um, we believe that they are consistent and apply with the general plan relevant to their application. Now, as they've complied with other aspects of the zoning criteria, we also believe that they're in line with all of those requirements. So it's sort of a compounding requirement. Some of these requirements, they sort of build on themselves. If you don't meet one, you're not going to meet two. If you don't meet one and two, you're not going to meet three and some, and then you go on to something different. As a direct result, as they meet all of the criteria, they build upon their compliance with all aspects of the general plan relevant to their request. E, and yes, there are some subjective analysis that has to be made and it has to be made by this body in order to move forward, uh, for a zoning.
All right. Thank you for that explanation, Mayor. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, I think Counselor Mary Worth found the thing she was looking for earlier. So I'll give, come back to you. And then I think Counselor Garcia wants the floor again. Counselor Rivera, you said you're okay at the moment? Okay. So Counselor Mary Worth, you have the floor again.
Thank you. And, um, thanks for patience while I looked for this. I just was skipping over the page and I think, um, so in, in, uh, chapter two of the general plan, it talks about heritage resources. And it says, throughout the public meetings and comment period, which led to participation of this document, Santa Fe's heritage resources were cited as some of the planning area's major assets. These resources reflect Santa Fe's archaeological, historic and cultural heritage. The physical layout of older and established neighborhoods were looked at as critical elements in planning for sustainable development. The preservation of Santa Fe's visual character was identified as essential. This chapter provides a context for Santa Fe's heritage resources by presenting a historic overview of the development of the city. Santa Fe's current efforts at identifying and managing its heritage assets are demonstrated. Implementing policies establish a means by which the city intends to further its efforts of appropriately managing its heritage resources and integrating them into the urban design and development strategies. And so some of the themes, so we go through, we have themes and one, one of the themes is character. Maintain and respect Santa Fe's unique personality, sense of place and character. The guiding principle, uh, foster municipal and community awareness, positive appreciation and support for Santa Fe's agricultural, cultural and historic resources. And this one, and then, well, there's a bunch here that are identify and assess agricultural and heritage resources man-made for the aesthetic, educational, economic and scientific contributions they make to Santa Fe's quality of life. Respect and scientifically manage archaeological, cultural and historic patterns, resources and symbols, preserving the contribution they make to understanding Santa Fe's characteristic cultural traditions. Preserve the heterogeneous cultural, historic and visual qualities of Santa Fe. Recognize that the city's policies, and this is where I think is key, of promoting affordable housing and preserving the cultural, historic and visual qualities of Santa Fe may require close coordination. And I think in this, uh, we get why there are a couple of different mentions for an overlay. How, how many times does the general plan mention the Old Pecos Trail overlay and the need for it?
Mayor, Counselor, Counselor Worth, I think it's only in that.
I, I can't hear you. Sorry.
I believe I've only read it once within. Oh, okay. Maggie said that in her findings, they got three.
Okay, I had two. Uh, where's the third one? Maybe we better go over those.
Mayor, Counsel, Counsel, Mary Worth. So i- in my reading, um, I didn't, I didn't find it in the heritage resources, chapter and chapter two, um, no mention of the Old Pecos Trail scenic corridor. There is a list of, you know, quite extensive list of historic sites at the end of that chapter. Um, there are some sites that are along Old Pecos Trail specifically, um, but, um, not the entire corridor itself. And there's sections of like Aguafria Street, for example. Um, in chapter three, in land use, uh, it's mentioned three times. And the first one I count is the, a future land use map. So it's, you know, signified on there. It is signified as an implementing policy. And it has that little brief paragraph as well, where it talks about different overlays.
Can you briefly speak to what an implementing policy is? Cause we have, I, I think every chapter has guiding principles and then an implementing policy.
Yeah, Mayor, Counsel, Counsel, Mary Worth, the, um, introduction to the general plan covers these definitions. Um, they have definitions for the themes, for the guiding policies and implementing policies. And so implementing policies are at the end of each chapter and represent commitments to specific actions. They may refer to existing programs or call for establishment of new ones.
Okay. And so just going back again.
Somebody silence that phone, please? Thank you.
So besides the general plan, we also have a resolution that suggests that there should be an Old Pecos Trail overlay. Which is Mayor, Council.
2015-92. Right. I believe that Mayor, yeah, Counsel, Counsel, Mary Worth, um, I believe that resolution was specific to direct staff to reconvene the efforts to establish the corridor, which was referenced in the, and then it references the references in the general plan.
So it says a resolution directing staff to complete the Old Pecos Trail scenic corridor plan by following the necessary public processes in 2015. And that is that, so under criteria three, a different use category is more advantageous to the community as articulated in the general plan or other adopted city plans. Does this resolution count as a adopted city plan? Oh. Or, or, or would it have been the corridor if it had been adopted?
Mayor, Counsel, Counsel, Mary Worth, yeah. If there was an adopted corridor, that would have been an ordinance, which would have been in chapter 14, similar to the South Central Highway Corridor. And then we would have applied those standards had they existed. But not the resolution. That's not an ordinance.
Okay. So it's not considered another adopted city plan?
Correct.
Because it's basically a memorial. It's a, it's a statement of what the governing body wanted to have happen. It's like, it, it's like our feeling, our, I don't know, how do you describe these?
Mayor Reverend Counselor, it sounds like it was.
Aspiration.
Statement of a desired future plan that hasn't happened yet. And part of the, um, general plan also uses that future language, like a prediction. We will do this in the future, but it doesn't set a deadline.
Okay.
In the general plan. I know the resolutions had, may have had deadlines. I'm not sure.
So in essence, the only thing we have to go on, a different use category is more advantageous, advantageous to the community as articulated in the general plan is the general plan and the three references to creating Old Pecos Trail overlay.
So Mayor, um, Counselor, Counsel, Mary Worth, what I think we have to go on are the, the 14 themes that are kind of, uh, adopted as part of the general plan and then referenced specifically in the land use chapter and throughout the other chapters. Um, you know, the one we've talked a lot about is affordable housing. You know, that we will actively participate in the creation of affordable housing. I think the infill, um, has been the urban form. You know, that's one of the themes. Promote a compact urban form and encourage sensitive, compatible infill development. Um, you know, and I, I think there's several here that, you know, you could kind of stretch to apply. There's, uh, transportation alternatives. Um, this, you know, development is a longer corridor that has, uh, bike trails. Um, they will be installing sidewalks um, that people can, can walk along that aren't there today. Um, there is, um, sustainable growth. Um, you know, balancing, which I think is a good, you know, kind of concept to consider here. Ensuring that development is sustainable and that growth, conservation, redevelopment and natural resources are protected. Um, with this development, there's a, you know, the flood zone is not buildable. There's a 25 foot setback from the Arroyo. Uh, let's see. Um.
An, another theme you haven't mentioned yet is in chapter two, the character. Maintain and respect Santa Fe's unique personality, sense of place and character. Maintain and respect Santa Fe's unique personality, sense of place and character.
Yes, and that's also, you know, one of the themes uh, that's referenced in land use. Land use has quite a few themes because we kind of touch on so many different aspects of life. And yeah, character, maintain and respect Santa Fe's unique personal sense of place and character. And, you know, all of these themes um, are listed in the general plan. They are not prioritized. Um, they do not, one is not um, prefaced over the other. It specifically says, um, you know, that in the, in the introduction when it discusses all of these themes. That these are just kind of the, the, as part of that public process that developed this plan, these were the main concerns of the community. Um, and they, one is not uh, superior to the other. So we, you know, it's that balancing between these um, these themes and these desires of the community.
But if I'm determining more advantageous, I I in in the subject, subjective standard, I could prioritize.
Mayor, Council, Councilor Mereworth, yeah, it it explicitly says that the Planning Commission and the governing body can um, prioritize. To my knowledge, you know, that officially has never, you know, happened.
And you, you went directly to themes, not to guiding principles. Do you, do you have a reason for that?
It's just themes come first.
In what sense? They just, just it, they're listed first or?
Yeah, we could talk about, you know, policies and implementing things as well. Yeah. Yeah, themes are just listed first. Um, then we go to guiding policies. And for land use, there's three guiding policies. Uh, there shall be consistency between the general plan and the city's land use development laws. Um, in reading the general plan, this seemed to be a really big issue at the time that the general plan was adopted. Um, there wasn't consistency in how the zoning laws were being um, implemented. And so you, that's, I believe why that's the first uh, guiding policy is that there is this consistency. Um, the guiding policy two in land uses, there shall be a mix of uses and housing types in all parts of the city. And that mixed uses should not be, just be encouraged. But in certain areas such as mis- mixed use districts, districts and redevelopment areas, it is specifically recommended in the general plan. And then the third guiding policy is there shall be infill development at densities that support the construction of affordable housing and a designated mix of land uses that provide an adequate balance of service, employment opportunities to address residential growth throughout the urban area, including the rail yard.
Yeah, which is interesting when you go back up to the heritage section in two, which says we're supposed to balance uh, not just uh, retail, employment opportunities, residential growth. Uh, but we're supposed to balance, you know, sense of place, character. Uh, I have to scroll back up there. Sorry, I'm ad libbing here. Uh, where was it? So I I guess the point being there's an awful lot of things we're trying to balance. Um, all right, and I guess my time is up for now, so I'll regroup. Thanks.
Counselor Lee Garcia, you've been patient and I apologize for not calling on you sooner. You have the floor, sir.
No problem, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I um, I really didn't have many more questions, but I did um, something did spark my interest, uh, and I I believe this was something that um, uh, Mr. Sumner um, stated last uh, last meeting, if you can come up and this question's for you. Um, we were talking about building heights and how that is affected for this specific project. Um, and in the current uh, proposed development plan, there are no two-story houses that are being proposed on this.
That is correct.
Back to a statement that you made, and I think the question was asked by one of my colleagues in regards to if the developer were to build at the current R one, you said um, they could do a two-story house.
Uh, they would go to twenty-five feet, and that's generally considered a two-story home. Uh, the structures could all go to twenty-five feet.
So um, is there any possibility in this current proposal that the houses could at some point potentially go to twenty-five feet?
No, it would be, it has been imposed as a condition of our approved development plan. It will also be part of our covenants. Now, that's a private matter, but it is a condition of the approved development plan. So when you ask, is there a possibility, what somebody would have to do is go back to the Planning Commission and say, hey, we want to get rid of this condition. So as a condition, it has the force of law until somebody changes that. And the only uh, body that has the authority to change that is the Planning Commission, subject to an appeal to this uh, governing body as to the removal of that condition of approval.
Thank you. That's the only question I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I do just want to read. I found the change to the South Central Highway Corridor. And I have a thousand tabs open because I have every chapter of the general plan open now. Um, here it is. So it's actually twenty-ten dash nine. Um, and it states, well, at least that's what it is on the clerk's website.
Mayor, but council, I think that's the ordinance I was referring to the bill, which has the red line.
Oh, yeah, I apologize. Well, then tell me if this is what you are seeing, because what I see is that the minimum building setback from the edge of the right of way from the street shall be fifty feet, except that the minimum building setback from Old Pecos Trail between I twenty-five and St. Michael's Drive shall be seventy-five feet. Was the red line, was that Old Pecos Trail piece the part that was put in?
Mayor, but council, and there were additional changes, so I have verified that at this point. Um, Pat might want to speak to it.
Thank you.
If she has in front of her, or I can pull it up. I I do have it, the red line in front of me. There, there was a few other changes. That was the only one specific to that section.
Okay, as long as I'm
There were other changes that were
Old Pecos Trail, so we don't have to talk about the others because
Okay.
We're not talking about that area town. Um, thank you.
Mayor, we're, some, some of them were applicable to Old Pecos as well, but not at, at the exclusion of other areas.
Okay, I think it's, it's kind of the idea of what sets Old Pecos Trail apart, and it looks like that was contemplated um, in some other work that previous governing bodies did. Uh, Mr. Eskival, did you have something to add?
Um, not to that. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that this project is a subdivision and a rezoning, no development plan. So all conditions that were imposed previously at the subdivision level are specific to the subdivision. We do, we do not have a, we do not have any conditions relevant to any of the zoning requests.
Thank you. Um, so, so back to the general plan. Um, we're spending a lot of time in there, more than we normally do. This is, this is great. I love the general plan. I'm looking at, you know, this conversation about Old Pecos Trail. Um, also in, on chapter three, there are actually some different corridor protection areas that have been identified. So there's the Rodeo Road I twenty-five corridor. There's also the Greater Aguafria area. And there's the Siler Road redevelopment district. Do we have any? Have we adopted any specific plans around these areas? It was called, they were also called out in the general plan?
Mayor, Council, Counselor Cassidy, not that I'm aware of.
Have developments gone through in these areas since nineteen ninety-nine?
Uh, Mayor, Council, Counselor Cassidy, yes.
Of rezonings?
I
Yes, I've been through some of them.
Siler Road, yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that that's important, that, that there are other areas where there has been this call for um, corridor protection. And that yet has not stopped um, development occurring in those areas and really taking into consideration um, the bal- again, the balance of needs, and it, this really is a conversation, the balance of needs. Um, which brings me to um, my next conversation following up on what Councilor Mereworth was, was discussing in regards to chapter two. And this conversation of charact- what was it? It's character. The resources reflect Santa Fe's archaeological, historic and cultural heritage. Um, the visual character is identified as essential. There was also something I believe that said that the personality of the city is in there. And then this, this chapter goes on to discuss history. Who was here and when? When we're talking about character, are we restricted to just looking at the physical character of the city, or are we also talking about the demographic character of the city?
Who are you?
Yeah, sure, Maggie, Maggie, Dan, staff. Experts on general plan. Pat, maybe, I don't.
Mayor, uh, Council, Counselor Cassidy, let me just, give me, give me one second. Not an expert in chapter two as much as.
Well, I mean, when I look at chapter two, it really talks about, about our cultural heritage. And culture comes from people. Do we have any information about the demographic changes that have been made to this part of the city over the last twenty years? I have a few of them. I grew up in Soli Lomas. On Caia Topless. There were tons of children in that neighborhood, tons. Bus ten was filled by the time you got down in Royo Chimiso. I don't believe that's the case anymore.
You were waiting for?
Yes, if we have any information about the demographic changes, even in the city, just as a pattern, you know, how, how have things shifted in this city?
Counsel, Mayor, Council, I don't know if we have any demographic uh, data to actually answer that question. I do know that in reading the minutes when this was adopted, the minutes identified that the city was about seventy-three thousand strong. Now we're about eighty-three thousand strong, so the demographics or the population has definitely grown in terms of the mix of races that have populated these areas. I would not have that without looking at, at the census data.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Let me do a quick check with my colleagues on the governing body. We're at about the two-hour mark. Um, I think Counselor Michael Garcia has some more points he might want to explore. I know I haven't had a chance to ask a few questions. Counselor, you're good, Counselor Verell. Any other, Counselor Mereworth, did you have another round you wanted to get into?
I I might have a couple more questions. Can we take a bio break?
I think that's where I was headed. If my colleagues would like to take a ten-minute break, just to stretch, everybody take a stretch. There's some vending machines, if you want a bottle of water or a, a, a quick snack, and then we'll be back by around two-twenty. So we'll adjourn for, I'm sorry, twelve-twenty, twelve-twenty. I'm in a different time zone, twelve-twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We, uh, thank you for your patience. If you could all take a seat, please. Uh, there are more seats at the moment, so grab one if you've been standing. Uh, and we'll reconvene. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Okay, we have a, we have a couple of folks who have a couple, we have a few people who still have questions they want to use to clarify uh, the, the consideration in front of us. I'm willing to, uh, I, I've been waiting my turn, but Counselor Lindell, you go ahead and I'll follow up after you, and then we'll come back around again.
I don't mind, Mayor, you'd like to go?
You go.
Um. So I'll, I'll ask a, a different question than the first time. Counselor, uh, Garcia had, uh, Mr. Throne go through the, uh, criteria on the, on a rezoning. So I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. Sommers to go quickly, quickly through, um, the other side of, of, um, those steps.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor Lindell, if I understand the question, it is to address the reasons that the criteria have been met.
Correct.
How that shows up here. I'll be very brief. The general plan has, as you all have noted, various stated policies and there are adopted policies of the general plan. And they carry with them a land use map that incorporates expressly the designations on the land use map. One of them is an infill area. This is in the infill area. And the, uh, um, general plan says that infill usually should be done at, at higher densities than maybe the surrounding density for purposes of promoting affordable housing. Affordable housing is an expressly adopted policy of the general plan. And the other is, is the efficient use of, uh, existing resources. This property currently as zoned allows, will, 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 allows for the use of septic tanks at R1 on this property. Does not require that anybody connect to the city's sewer line, which is there. This designation would require the connection to the sewer line. The use of that, the efficient use of that sewer. Um, without that, the, the property can be developed on septic tanks. The, um, the, the other is that this is a, a, um, I, I think that, that those are the prominent, uh, uh, policies, infill, affordable housing, uh, the, um, use, uh, efficient use of existing infrastructure. The other is to, uh, to avoid urban sprawl. Sprawl is defined the, as the extension of city services and infrastructure beyond the location where it is for the purposes of accommodating future development. It is not the use of existing infrastructure to accommodate that development. It's, it's akin to the policy of the efficient use, but what it does is it avoids urban sprawl. And sprawl being those extensions of those utilities out into areas that are undeveloped and do not have those services. So I believe that those are the five policies that are stated in the general plan that, um, we believe are, uh, more advent, that this zoning, uh, incorporates and is more advantageous than the R1. And in, and I, I, I believe that the question that, um, Counselor Romero Worth was getting at is the question of advantageous, is, is that subjective? That is your prerogative. What is more advantageous? Look at the list of policies and say, these are more advantageous or they are not. And I think that's the essential question.
Thank you, Mr. Sommers, for being so brief. Um, so a couple of things that I just want to make sure that I'm clear about and, um, maybe Ms. Moore or, uh, Mr. Escibal could answer. So for this property to remain R1, uh, it would, uh, allow for each one of these residents to have a, uh, septic?
Mayor, Council, uh, Counsel Lindell, um, chapter 22 requires that anybody within 200 feet of the sewer line has to connect. Uh, if this is beyond that 200 foot threshold, then they would be allowed septic systems.
Okay, just to clarify, Mr. Sommers, is it beyond 200 feet?
Mr. Mayor, Madam, uh, Counsel Lindell, yes, it is beyond 200 feet.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Escibal? The other thing I heard was if this were to remain R1, these houses could be, uh, two story. Is that correct?
Mayor, Council, Counsel Lindell, uh, currently the applicant can go to 25 feet to the roof deck according to the South Central Highway Corridor. They restricted themselves to 18 feet. So if this went back to an R1, which would have to go back through the E and N process to revise their original subdivision, because it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, the final plat would not be compatible with the preliminary plat, so they'd have to redo it before the planning commission. They could offer or not offer that 25 foot, that's restriction to 18 feet, and they could opt to utilize the full benefit of the ordinance, which is up to 25 feet.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Mayor, I'll yield, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a few questions. Uh, if the city clerk would hold me to my own time limit, I'd appreciate it. I, uh, I'll, I'll look over to you as I move on. Uh, I think the conversation this morning continues to be impressive and increasingly, um, fine hone what we're working on as a decision. And I have to salute every member of the governing body for the level of preparation and work that's gone into these hearings. Um, this is, if people, whether people agree or disagree with any member of the governing body, you have to give everybody up here credit for the extent to which they're prepared, thoughtful, and doing very hard and consistent work to balance, uh, as Counselor Cassidy said, to balance the desire for more housing, more affordable housing and preservation and respect and, uh, maintenance of the character and quality of life in Santa Fe. Uh, to that point, uh, Counselor Merriworth was working on a series of questions regarding the criteria by which we determine whether or not a proposal is more or less advantageous and how do we evaluate that and is it subjective? And I want to go to some, uh, criteria that are designed to help us make it less subjective. And Ms. Moore, come back to your earlier point that the first, first, uh, mention in the, uh, general plan is that our land use decision should be, as you described it, we should strive for consistency and for clarity so that we're not, uh, whip sawing the community as we uh, only apply subjective decision making. One guideline or set of guidelines to help us be less, uh, or to be more consistent, uh, that, that should give us some guidance is the South Central Highway Corridor Protection District. Uh, and if I'm not mistaken, they lay out a number of, uh, standards for any development in that, uh, quarter.
Point of order.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Can we get this on the screen? Again, we're referring to a paper copy, which I was not allowed to use.
No, this was referring to a copy of the city code.
Okay, but you've got that thing in front of you. If, if you're referring to her presentation, can we put it up on the screen?
I'm not. I'm referring to the city code. So the city code lays out development and design standards. It's in, uh, section 14 dash 5.5A. It's the South Central Highway Corridor Protection District. Do you want, I can read them, you can read them. Density maximum 21 units per acre. Height maximum 25 foot structures. Setback or yard minimum building or yard setback is 75 feet from the edge of the right of way. Uh, however, that ordinance, that ordinance was, uh, uh, changed for Old Pecos Trail to have 75 feet setbacks. Uh, existing landscaping to the greatest extent possible. Existing natural landscaping shall not be disturbed within 25 feet of the property line that adjoins the right of way. Uh, no parking structures or parking are allowed. Plant material shall be provided in the open space setback and so on. There's a list of these. Can you working from whatever list you have, or if you have the same ordinance that I have, to what extent does this proposal either meet or miss these, uh, protections?
Mayor, Counsel, Mayor? The, uh, the subdivision, uh, the preliminary subdivision plat, um, that was before the planning commission meets and exceeds all of the requirements of the South Central Highway Corridor, or exceeds some of the requirements of the House, South Central Highway Corridor. And there are no variances that were requested as part of the application.
Are there items on this list that it does not meet?
It, no, it, it meets every requirement in code.
Okay.
Extenses, except for the commercial requirements, which would not apply.
Which don't apply.
All applicable
Right.
standards have been met.
Now, let me ask about screening, because we heard from an earlier witness about fences and walls and screening. I know Quail Run has an extensive fence that runs the length of that property and a gate and all. With this, let me ask the applicant. Does your proposed development include walls or fences at this time?
Honorable Mayor, the, the planning commission placed a condition on the property, which we accepted to beef up all of the landscaping along the Old Pecos Trail, which we will show the planning when we go back to them for final plat if we are successful today. But we do not have presently a commitment to build a wall, but we have committed to make sure that if someone does build a wall, that it does setback to that 75-foot setback.
Okay, so no, currently, we're not talking about at the, at the line that is the Old Pecos Trail Corridor.
That is correct.
Walls, fences, like, of any kind?
Correct. The 75-foot setback will be maintained in its natural state.
And was that something that the planning commission asked for or the neighborhood? How did that become a requirement?
It was, it came from a concern about what the scenic, what people would see as they're driving along the Old Pecos Trail and how we, the project could make the view of our particular, our project consistent with what you see along the Old Pecos Trail already. And from that discussion came additional landscaping and no structures, sheds, et cetera, within that 75-foot setback.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Escobal?
Mayor, Counsel, that was actually a condition required by Heather Lamboy when she reviewed the memo before it got signed by Rudy.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Moore, I think Counselor Romero Worth has a point. Do you have your slide available from your presentation on our first, or I guess our second meeting, where you cite what a draft Old Pecos Trail ordinance from 2016 would require?
Mayor, just one second.
Yep, take your time. Would you like, would the, does the audience or does the council need this, a larger screen turn so you all can see it? Or is the one up above adequate?
Okay, here we go. Okay, it's just going to get me to the first page here, but and tell me again what
There's a slide in your presentation that is, what, what a draft Old Pecos Trail ordinance dash 2016 would have, would, might have potentially had.
Correct, yes. Let me get through, I think that was the third attempt to get an ordinance.
Keep going.
Keep going, here we go.
Because I, like Counselor Romero Worth, did review this on the Zoom, but it's also good to have a
Sure, yeah. So this was the, the draft Old Pecos Trail ordinance from 2016. The, the most recent effort that I could account for. And this was spearheaded by my predecessor, Mr. Noah Burke, with contributions from the Sena Southeast Neighborhood Association.
Sena. So if you look at the, this chart, first of all, I want to ask a question about the process. We heard from Mr. Burke, we, we've heard that there were three attempts to get an Old Pecos Trail ordinance introduced and adopted. How far did this actually get? What are, what records or documents exist about the potential drafting or creation of such an ordinance?
Right, okay, so I, I found, I think probably three iterations of a draft with different, you know, dates for this effort. I believe the, and, and records of various in-person meetings with staff back and forth. So
When you say back and forth, you mean with the Sena group?
Yes, yes, yeah, with the, the Sena group and with, with land use staff.
Okay, so it got to the point where there was a series of documents representing a conversation on paper about what an Old Pecos Trail ordinance might look like. And this is where it stopped.
Yeah, I don't have, you know, there's no ordinance that was adopted that we can refer to. I just have the drafts and then what Noah Burke
Now, if you were to apply the proposal to this, these criteria, to what extent would they meet or not meet what was a working draft between our land use department and the neighborhood association?
Mayor, thank you. So this is a hypothetical, right?
I will acknowledge it is a hypothetical.
Okay, so if, so if this, if, if this applied to 2,200 Old Pecos Trail, they would be, so the corridor boundary is 600 feet from the right-of-way, which is the same as the South Central Highway Corridor, so it would apply to them. We have an open space setback of 20 feet. So as we've discussed, they are, you know, exceeding that by 55 feet, because they are committed to a 75-foot setback of, of essentially an open space, no build zone. The residential requirement would be met of 50% open space per lot. The building setback, again, would be exceeded. There, listed here is 25. We have a 75-foot setback in this proposal. The building height proposed here was going to be 25 feet, which matches with the South Central Highway Corridor overlay. And the applicant and staff and the planning commission have conditioned that the height of this proposal would be limited to 18 feet. So that would exceed that requirement. The use is permitted, same as underlying zoning, that's not really applicable. Residential density would be limited to the low-density residential, R3 to R7. That is, that applies, meets that requirement. Let's see, non-residential density would not apply. And we have an arroyo setback here of 20 feet. The application is committed to a 25-foot arroyo setback.
Okay. Madam City Attorney, am I correct that a member of the governing body can at any time introduce an ordinance?
However, if it's on the agenda, yes, yes.
Can be placed on the agenda and introduced.
Correct.
Okay, so regardless of how this vote goes today or whenever we take it, there's nothing to prevent me from introducing this draft ordinance for the governing body to consider as it is described on this piece of paper.
However, Counselors, I haven't analyzed this with the staff. I'm not aware of anything at this point. Your current rules, which you can waive at any time, require me to sign off on things, but you can absolutely waive those at any time.
Okay, thank you. Is there somebody here from the, who was active in Sena at the time? Anybody who helped participate in that activity? Do you want to come up for a minute? I have a quick question for you. Thank you for volunteering. Kind of feel like this is a magic actor. I'm asking for a volunteer.
I, I, I've been
Sworn in.
Pat Lillis?
Right.
I just wanted to make a note that this is not for Old Pecos Trail from Caye Medico going south. It's to, it's Old Pecos Trail from Caye Medico going to Cordova.
Right, but it could be extended without any problem.
That's not
Yeah, I, I actually, wasn't my question. So my question is, having listened to the criteria for the South Central Highway Corridor protection, what would you add to those protections to make it more sustainable, more attractive, and to do more to preserve the, the nature and the character of that corridor? If you could advise us on additional protections beyond the ones that are listed, which involve density, height, setback, planting, landscaping, arroyos, floodplain, open space, what would you propose, looking back on the Sena activity? What kind of additional protections would you like to see?
Well, I'm a part of Sena and I, I think the general plan says to go through a public participation process. So for you to ask me these questions is just not, I don't think appropriate, as I think there are a lot of people who
No, come on. Come on, people, you know we're not clapping or booing. So, so you, you're, you would say that in order to arrive at additional protections, you, you're not in a position to offer those, right?
I'm, I'm saying that, first of all, the South Central Highway Corridor is completely different than the Old Pecos Trail scenic corridor that's listed twice in the general plan. And why, I don't know why, why we're even here is kind of unbelievable, because it says implementing policies, that standards were not set, were not set in the general plan. For these two, two parts, I can read them, it's short.
No, I understand what you're saying. I'm, I was looking for a very specific answer. If there are things that came out of the E and N or other specific to this proposal, other items that could or should have been added to the protections, I, I'm looking for guidance. If it's not something
I don't think any of, any of us here who oppose this are interested in, in that. We're interested in our public participation process. It has failed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. That's, that's my last question. Counselor Garcia, you have some follow-ups.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this topic did actually bring up a question for me. And, and thank you to the prior community member who pointed out that this ordinance has, has only covering half of the Old Pecos Trail scenic corridor. And, but my question is to staff that, that was doing the research on this. Because as we all know, as governing body members, legislation is drafted. And there are many times when it gets drafted, goes nowhere. It gets drafted, it gets a sponsor, goes nowhere. Gets drafted, it gets a sponsor, it goes to governing body, it gets denied. It goes to governing body, gets shifted and changed, flipped up around, mixed up. It's not even what's potentially proposed. So my, my question is, what's proposed here is, we can't, we, we, we would be doing a disservice to the community to be judging against what was proposed in a draft. So my question is, was there a potential sponsor on this legislation that you found?
Mayor, Counselors, Counselor Garcia, I've found no record of any sponsorship.
Okay, thank, thank you for clarifying that. So, so now let me get on to my questions that I had. And I do want to circle back to, sure, then.
Mayor, while there was no sponsorship, Counselor Ives did put forth that legislation that required us to go back to the process, which is what Noah did. Now, whether or not you have one side of the street or the other side of the street participating, it did go through the public process as articulated within the general plan as we pushed forward. It just didn't go all the way.
Right, and I think that's the critical part, that there was not any recommendations put forth to the governing body to consider, which is the critical component of the recommendation of the, the resolution that was sponsored in 2015, as well as the general plan. So thank you for that clarification. But to get back to one of the topics that was, that I missed, that wanted to bring up last time, because we've been talking about definitions. I tried to find definition of scenic corridor, scenic byway, haven't found anything. But I did find a definition of spot zoning, which was part of our last meeting. And so just for the record, there is a definition in state statute, which would, I'm assuming, apply to us as its municipality. In Chapter 3 Municipalities, Article 21, Zoning Regulations, Section 3-21-1, zoning authority of county or municipality to spot zoning. The term spot zoning refers to the rezoning of small parcel of land to permitted use that fails to comply with the comprehensive plan or is inconsistent with the surrounding area, grants a discriminatory benefit to the parcel owner and/or harms neighboring properties or the community welfare. Spot zoning is determined on an ad hoc basis dependent on the facts and circumstances of each case. So I just want that out there for the record, because that is there in state statute. So let me get into my questions regarding the general plan.
Counselor, did you want a, a, a response from Ms. Moore?
I, I, I don't, because it's, I'm just stating for the record that the question asked, if we had it in city code.
We do, Counsel.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and Counsel, and Counselor Garcia. So essentially, that definition that you talked about is is our approval criteria for rezoning. It has to be more than two acres. It has to benefit more than, you know, one landowner. So we, that is embodied in our approval criteria, you know, as we consider a rezoning request.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, because my recollection is we, we said we didn't have it, so I quickly looked it up and thank you for clarifying. It's, it's in our, it's in our code. So I want to jump back to the general plan, because I jumped online using the search and looked at the general plan that we have posted. And so I, I was looking at Section 3, and it, I, I, I want to jump back to this inconsistency. We, we jumped to Page 3, and then what would be technically Page 5 is the map that has been kind of in question, the Future City Land Use Map. This map in here is dated April 2000. The land use map, or this general land use plan is from 1999, so unless somebody was time traveling, I'm, I'm a little, got some questions on how this map got in here. I, I understand that there was updates made, but the, that should be an addendum to the process. With that being said, page, we, we start with page, I'm going from Page 4 to what would look like it would be Page 5, which is the Future Land Use Map. Then there's another following map on which would be Page 6. And then I jump to the next page, which would be Page 7, but in the plan, it identifies it as Page 6. So it, it looks to me like if this Future Land Use Map was squeezed into the process somehow along the way. And I, I'm just wondering how that could be when the entire rest of the document, which has been updated in some way, shape, or form, or is this is the kind of outlier? So can you help me understand how that can be?
Okay, Counsel, Mayor, Counselor Garcia, I, there was a lot there, so I want to make sure that I answered, you know, your exact questions there. And, and just to, you know, clarify, I did put up the, so this is the, you know, kind of much talked about physical copy of the general plan, 1900 general plan that I had, unknowingly had in my office from Greg Smith. And so I wanted to just take out the map, which was folded and, you know, kind of talk. So this is the Figure 3.2, Future Land Use Map, and that is a, a paper copy, obviously. And so we now live in a digital world and we rely on GIS, and at the time, this was developed on GIS. And so you can, you know, we can go to our GIS map and we can print out a copy of the Future Land Use Map, you know, at any time. And it, you know, so, but this is, this is the original paper copy. So I, can I clear, help clarify what you need to know exactly?
Sure, so, but my question is, if this is the copy, it's dated 2000. The general plan is dated 1999.
This copy is dated April 14, 1999, and the resolution of 199945, which the general plan adopted this map as part of it.
So then my follow-up to that is, why isn't that map included in what's posted online and then have an appendix as an updated map? It seems like if it was cut and pasted out, a, a, again, just, just, it's not beneficial to, to our processes, because we've had a lot of confusion around this, and, and just trying to clear up what happened along the way. what happened along the way from the adoption in April of nineteen ninety-nine to this map, to the map that is currently being used, which is dated two thousand and three.
Mayor, Counsel, Counsel, Counselor Garcia, our documents, our maps are living documents, right? They get amended from time to time, either through rezonings or general plan amendments. Uh, as a direct result, many maps that were adopted, originally adopted, are going to look very different from what we've done over the course of time. So at the time, the, the Planning Division, Long Range Planning Division, whenever they z- uh, scanned in the general plan to put up for a download on their webpage, they must have had a much newer map at the time it was scanned in. What we found was the original map and in the general plan that is on the online, it is folded so that the only thing you see are the various elements that tell you what low density is, a very low density is. So while I wasn't there at the time it was scanned in, I can only assume based on how the city has operated since I've been here, that these maps are always going to be amended, they're always going to be updated. And they, if it's not the same map that was originally put into the general plan, it's still a map that follows whatever the governing body at the time adopted as part of any changes that may have occurred and that date stamp reflects that, that map.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Eskibell. So I guess my question is because, again, this was updated. Why isn't the two thousand and three version part of the plan versus this two thousand version?
Sorry, I, I don't understand your question.
So, so using the logic that it was updated and that's why this is now part of the packet, it's been updated again because we now have a two thousand and three version. Why isn't, why hasn't that replaced the map in the plan?
Mayor, Counsel, Counselor Garcia, the, we now use a digital map on our G I S system. And all of the images that I've placed in the packet material and in the, and in my report are based on the current information that I can get out of our G I S. Uh, a lot of the information that you're seeing is a direct result of an exchange between the community's questions, your questions, uh, and our responses. But the information that I presented to the, to the governing body, including in my presentation, are all current maps based on our digital platform. I wouldn't go back to an older map unless I was referring to a consistency that shows what was then and what is now and whether, and what those changes are.
Correct, so, but my question is because this is the document that is public facing, any member of the public wants to go look at our nineteen ninety-nine general plan and they want to look at the future land use map. Right now, what there's, they would see is a folded up version from two thousand where, as you mentioned, we've got a musk, much cleaner, crisper version, two thousand and three. Why isn't that part of what is out there available publicly?
Mayor, Counsel, uh, Counselor Garcia, the G I S is a web-based application that is available for everybody. So everybody has that opportunity to get it and everybody has the opportunity to, to download just the future land use map from our G I S archive or map center, although it's a lot harder to read than going through the digital format because it's been pixelized as a graphic. The map that you're referring to here is just an archive document based on when they downloaded the information. The text within that general plan has not changed. So we still used a lot of that text information within the general plan from all of the chapters. The maps may have changed and we refer back to the current maps that we use today and which are available to the public, uh, across the board.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Eskibell, but I, I'm, what, I, I think it would be more beneficial for the community to have the map as part of the document versus saying you've now got to jump to the G I S system. So that's just me as, as a policymaker wishing we had the best tools and resources available for the public. Aside from the maps, because my time is limited and I don't want to waste all the time on this unless it's something critical, Mr. Eskibell.
What, what I'll do is I will re, and the technology at the time they did this was pretty bad. Um, what I'd like to do is just have our, our, our clerk and our, our, our team upstairs just reproduce this book in its entirety, identify it as original so that people have the opportunity to know what was passed and they have the digital format to know what's current.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Eskibell, I really appreciate that. Um, so my next question is dealing with, uh, rezoning efforts. And, and it was stated that there was the, I think it was roughly two thousand and five when the plazas was proposed and, and it was approved for rezoning. My question is, since the approval of the twenty fifteen dash ninety-two resolution, has there been any rezone requests for the Old Pecos Trail Corridor?
Mayor, Counsel, uh, Counselor Garcia, can you just repeat that question again for us?
Sure, since, to make it short, since twenty fifteen, since the resolution was introduced, has there been any rezoning requests for the Old Pecos Trail Corridor?
Mayor, Counsel, Counselor Garcia, um, I'm not aware of any applications that have gone forward within that area. Uh, at least that segment, uh.
Was Morningstar part of the Morningstar proposal?
The resolution that Counselor Ives, uh, put forth was a direct result of the Morningstar. So that would have been before.
Okay.
Have there been building permits along Old Pecos Trail? I would assume there have been remodels and other stuff, but in terms of any developments that would require public hearing process, I'm not aware of any at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Eskibell. Um, Director Ladd, quick question for you. Sorry for, come on down, as they say in Price is Right, right? The, uh, quick question about affordable housing. Um, should this be denied? What would be any requirements for affordable housing?
Mayor, Reverend, Counselor Garcia, this project would be considered a small project, which is ten or fewer units. And our code allows those small projects to pay a fee in lieu of.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to, that, so ten or fewer, um, and it's twenty percent, or what is the requirement?
Counselor, I'm sorry, repeat the question?
So because it's a small project, what is, what would be the percentage requirement of affordable housing that would need to be built?
Well, there's no percentage of affordable housing that would be built at all. So it's just they would pay a fee, it's approximately or forty-five hundred dollars per unit, so somewhere around forty thousand dollars roughly. And I say that roughly because those pricing schedules are updated every year as the income data changes.
And, and I guess quick follow up to that. Should they elect to not pay the fee and wanted to develop, what would be, what would be developed?
Mayor, Reverend, Counselor Garcia, it would be a twenty percent requirement, um, but it's not a requirement because that's not what we require them to do under the code. Um, and with nine homes, that works out to one point, something.
Okay, thank, thank you for clarifying that. Quick question to the applicant. It, I think maybe your best, Carl, just because, uh, you, you've been speaking to the advantageousness and you've brought the topic of, uh, affordable housing being a component of that advantageous. Given that, my question is why would the applicant pay the fee in lieu of, instead of developing the units because they, they've seen that, that there is that need? And, and so my question is, why not move forward? If, if it were to be denied, why not still continue to, because they see it advantageous to, to develop those units as, uh, a seen need of the community?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor Garcia, I think that that, the answer to that, the frank answer is that it's, it is financially driven. If you have a forty-five thousand dollar, uh, check you have to write that covers your affordable housing versus a hundred and fifty thousand or a hundred and eighty thousand dollar cost to develop a, a home, it probably is more than that, that you lose. I think it's financially driven is that it just, it plays havoc with the investment.
Okay.
But it, it does not foreclose, as you said, if somebody is committed and says, we want affordable housing, they could put an affordable house and the cost would be probably three, four times the amount of the fee.
Thank you, Mr. Summer. And, and I got one last question, Mr. Mayor, and I should promise I'm done. This one's for Steph. So if this project was denied and it's been stated that we're going through a, a revamping of our Chapter Fourteen and, uh, there are changes made to the corridor where it may not require an applicant to come before us because it gets zoned up. Um, but, but with that being said, let's pretend the status quo stays the same. We, we revamped Chapter Fourteen, status quo stays the same. If we deny, can the applicant come back before us to apply, given we've went through the public participation process and, uh, proposed, done, done all the duties proposed through the general plan or the twenty fifteen resolution?
Mayor, Counsel, Counselor Garcia, let me see if I understand that. So if you deny this project, that, which is only the rezoning, could they come back to request a rezoning?
After the Chapter Fourteen is revamped, right? Because we're going to, going through this major overhaul of Chapter Fourteen, which then would, I'm assuming based off of the comments from staff, we would have met the, the, the condition set forth in the general plan and the twenty fifteen resolution, requesting a public participation process and putting forth a plan to the governing body. We would have met that criteria. Can the applicant come back again and reapply?
Uh, Mayor, um, Counselor Garcia, they can come back and reapply after one year.
Okay.
For a rezoning that has been denied.
Okay, so there's nothing that prohibits them after we're done Chapter Fourteen? Should we, should it be denied to come back and reapply based, okay, thank, thank you, that, that's it. Um, no other questions, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I think we have a couple other hands that, uh, want to go up. We've got Counselor Garcia, Counselor Cassett and Counselor Ramarworth in that order.
Thank you, Mayor, I just have one, one question in regards to the setbacks. Uh, and if you look at the maps, you see the, um, the plazas. Um, maybe staff can answer to this. What was the, um, the setback that that development was built at?
Um, Mayor, Counsel, I, I'm not familiar with the Plaza Development Plan. When I, I did analyze with the help of G I S and it looks like everybody along, with the exception of a couple of anomalies, which were portals and garages, uh, have met that seventy-five foot setback, at least along that corridor between St. Michael's Drive and I twenty-five. Um, so that's, that's what, what we found based on our G I S, uh, discoveries.
So again, with that answer, basically the plazas have met the seventy-five. Do you know if they have, did they exceed that when they built, you, you don't know the answer to that?
Uh, Mayor, Counsel, the plaza is a completely different development as it's subject to the P U D standards. This one does not have a P U D standard. So they may have misaged some of the rules and regulations in order to achieve their goals at the time. I wasn't sure what that was, but that's what the P U D allows.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then going back to the applicant, this, um, the, Mr. Summers, I guess, this plan would obviously is on target to meet the criterion of the seventy-five foot setback.
Count, uh, Mayor, Counsel, yes.
Okay, that, that was the only question I needed clarification, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cassett.
Thank you, Mayor, I think I found my answer in the memo, uh, real fast, just to confirm. Use cat, each, each, uh, zoning is its own use category, correct? So R one is a use category, R two is a use category, is that accurate use of the word use category?
Uh, Mayor, Counsel, Counselor Castle, uses are the uses like a house, a, the, uh, commercial unit of, of like a church or something. Zoning is more of a designation, uh, that allows for the categories of uses within that, that, that district. So it's a zoning, uh, more so than a use category, I guess you can.
Right, I was, well, I'm just looking at that criteria three, a different use category and just wanted to know that category like R one is its own, R two is its own, R.
Category would be residential and then you have different uses within that category under the residential category, uh, housing, single family, multifamily, um.
Increased density.
Group homes, all of those are uses within a use category within Chapter Fourteen. Zoning allows for the uses or the category of uses within its district.
Okay, thank you so much.
Counselor Ramarworth? Thank you, um, this question's for Ms. Moore. I just want, since the mayor brought this up, uh, I want to go back. Your presentation about the history of the old Santa Fe Trail overlay reflects basically the city side of that story, correct? What you found in our archives about the stop and start of that, trying to get an overlay?
Mayor, Counselors, Counselor Ramarworth? Yeah, this was, um, primarily electronic documents that I found on our planning drive and it, it included the, the, ironically, the oldest kind of effort in two thousand and one. Had a lot more files, I don't know if, because they printed them and scanned them back in or something. Um, but yeah, there were, there were records of emails between the, there was an Old Pecos Trail Working Group that was, uh, included members of the public, neighborhood associations, those sorts of things and staff, you know, back and forth, so I got to read those. Um, the white paper that staff wrote and then the various, uh, drafts of ordinances that were kind of marked up, uh, by members of the working group and responded to by staff. So it was a, it was a record of a dialogue between the members of the working group and staff.
Okay, but your presentation pretty much reflects the city side of the story of those interactions.
Uh, Mayor, Counselor, Counselor Ramarworth, well, I, I had the, the record from the, I think it's the Old Santa Fe Trail Association.
Old Santa Fe Association.
Yeah, that was the, a, the resolution that they passed, you know, their kind of group. And that was in there, um, other emails and faxes that came from the public, you know, to the city. Uh, you know, I had those records as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, one more question for Mr. Throne. So just one more time, because I, I'm not sure we've asked you directly, maybe I'm wrong. You've said in your memos that you don't think the applicant has met the third criteria, which is that, that a different use category is more advantageous to the community as articulated in the general plan.
Yes, Mayor.
And can you articulate why you think specifically? We, we heard the applicant say that the policies of the general plan, he thinks, um, promote infill, infill, affordable housing, avoids sprawl, uses the existing infrastructure. And I think he had one more, which I missed, but he, he kind of ticked off five, he said. Can you, in pretty quick?
Yes.
What, what are the reasons you think it has not met?
Mayor, Counselor, Ramarworth, um, and these, these are in my written comments as well. So, um, again, you have to look at as articulated in the general plan. It's not just advantage, it's not just, is R three, is R one better than R three? No one's, this is in the debate about in the abstract, this to do is as articulated in general plan. So the reason, um, why I and I think many others have said is, okay, what are the advantages? They've, the applicant and staff have cherry picked certain parts of the general plan, but say with their advantages, but the advantages of, are there advantages to five portable homes? Certainly there's advan- advantages to that. Does that outweigh the damage to the Old Pecos Trail Sena Corridor as articulated in the general plan? It is articulated in the subsequent two thousand and fifteen resolution, two thousand and fifteen ninety-two.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you, sorry. So we've already established that the resolution doesn't, we can't refer to that to, as. we can't refer to that as why this application does or doesn't meet the third criteria. So what I want to know from you is, why doesn't the applicant meet this third criteria?
So it's a fact finding, it's a fact finding exercise that you're engaged in. So we look at the facts. We look at, okay, what are the advantages? Is there, it would be more infill with this, but there would still be infill at R1. There would be 20 market rate housing that Mr. Summer had acknowledged would probably cost in the range of $700,000 to $1 million apiece. Is that an advantage to the existing community? I mean, you have to decide that. You know, we believe that certainly that that this is, that's not, those aren't affordable houses for people in this community right now. In fact, the general plan says there really should be a minimum density of five dwelling units per acre to reach the people who really need it, which is, back in 1999, was defined in the general plan as as people, families earning $70,000 or less. So there's the infill, sure, there's infill, but you know, it's sort of like asking, you know, is a thousand gallons of water better than a gallon of water? And the answer is certainly unless it's coming off from your roof into your living room. That's why this is, that's why the general plan, you know, has designated this specifically. It's a carve-out. It's more specific than the South Central Highway Corridor Protection District. That district existed prior to the 1999 general plan, and I gave you the the date on that in my public comments. I can't remember if it's 1997, but it was predated it. So when the general plan came along, it was recognized that, well, we have this corridor. And by the way, there was a question about why wasn't the general plan amended to adopt the corridor? It's in the plan. So other disadvantages. We've got also, aside from the, you've got the traffic issues, and you know, we have extensive comments about the traffic impact analysis.
Okay, but that's not in the general plan, right? So again, we're focusing on that third criteria.
Well, I think it is in the general plan because there are sections of the general plan that talk about impacts on existing neighborhoods, which by the way, Soli Lomas neighborhood is actually specifically recognized in the general plan as one of the historic neighborhoods that is part of the urban form in this town. And it's one that should be preserved. Now, is this just a neighborhood issue? No. But it is recognized. So that's in the general plan. You've talked about the fact that there are parts that recognize, even in the city code, you have, which is, you know, a part of the equation, you have the whole, the issue of the visual character. Now, this pertains to the old, the South Central Highway Corridor Protection District within which the Old Pecos Trail Scenic Corridor exists. That openness, that open space, that sense of place for which the city actually was given an award by the National Geographic Society that was addressed, I think, by one of the community members in the very first December 14th meeting. So you have that, but there is an impact. There's an impact in the neighborhood in terms of safety. I mean, you know, it's one of the reasons why we asked for a site visit back in September, because if you go on that sharp curve where seven of the units of the proposed 25-unit subdivision will be exiting, that is already a dangerous curve. I mean, I actually had to write to the head of the Public Works, and I copied the mayor. I was almost killed at that intersection three, two days ago. Now, not because of this development, but because people drive way over the speed limit on Old Pecos Trail, and they ran and they run the light at Old Pecos Trail and Westia Road all the time. Now, I'm not attributing that to the development, of course not, but when you have people say, oh, well, we have flat traffic there. That is not the experience of someone who's lived there for 32 years. I drive that every day because I go work out. I'm on that section. And it's not just the peak times that are very busy. But keep in mind, you also have a situation where the traffic counts were done in November of 2021. That wasn't post-pandemic, and we even today, we have a situation where we have a lot of our state employees, and probably, I think you have some city and county employees who are working remotely. The other thing is there's an assumption, and I addressed this in my comments, in the traffic impact analysis. And it's a 200-page analysis, so I get it, that most people don't have the time, patience to go through it. But one of the assumptions in there is, is it's a 10-year study horizon. They take the November traffic counts that they took, again, not post-pandemic, and what they do is, what, we project what the traffic level is going to be there for the next 10 years, 2024 to 2034. And what it assumes is there will be no other developments in the area because there's no other pending proposal for development of any property along Old Pecos Trail Scenic Corridor. Well, they're already vacant land and there's property for sale now. So the fact that there's no pending application, that is not a reasonable assumption to say, well, it's not going to increase. So you have, so getting back to your question, you know, you've got traffic safety concerns, you've got the concern. I think, I think Counselor, if I have my memory serves, Billy Real asked a question about this, about the U-turns that are going to have to happen for the 18 units that access on Old Pecos Trail. Those people come out in the morning. If any of them want to go into town, they're going to have to cross two lanes, and they're going to have to make a U-turn during that peak period. And I'm telling you, you don't want to be doing that. I mean, it's already a problem area. So we have a lot of people who have commented that that's a, one of the disadvantages of this of this proposal. You also have the impact on the foothills of Arroyo. That Arroyo, which goes under Old Pecos Trail, is a current wildlife corridor. People have commented it. They've shown you films of it. And what's going, and the sewer line will cross this. Now, they're going, it is designated as open space, and there's a setback. But the idea that you're going to go in and build 25 homes in there, and you go in with your leveling equipment, all the equipment that you know you have to, by the way, they're cutting down 117 trees. Significant trees as defined in the land use code. How do we know that? Well, buried in their plans, but it's in there, is a significant tree survey. They're required to submit that to you. And it says right up in the corner, for those of people who want to go look at it, and this is part of their March 21, 2022 application, it says they're going to remove 117 significant trees, and the code does require that they replace some of those trees. But again, that's an impact. Now, at the end of the day, you have to weigh all these things. And I get it, we need affordable housing, and I get it, there's also a need for other housing. But I think that is the whole point of the general plan, is it's that you're supposed to be looking at, when it says, as articulated in general plan, is why is this different? Why should this area be treated any different? Is this a situation where, where, you know, well, people in this area, you know, why shouldn't they have their share of affordable housing or density? That's, and the reason is because the general plan said, well, there's an asset here. It's, and in fact, the City Resolution 2015-92, and I believe Counselor Lindell was also a sponsor of that, along with former Counselor Ives, it calls it iconic and irreplaceable. The reason why, and by the way, this whole discussion about the 75-foot setback to me is a bit of a red herring because if you look at the, how it's articulated, this Old Pecos Trail Scenic Corridor implementing policy is articulated in the general plan. It says that density and other development standards will be developed, and then brought back to the, to the, to the city council or governing body for codification in Chapter 14. A setback is not a density requirement. Okay, so the fact that there was added a 75-foot setback did not, did not satisfy the Old Pecos Trail Scenic Corridor implementing policy in the general plan, and how do we know that? And how do you know that? You know that because it's in that 2015 resolution. You can't square that resolution and say, oh, no, we've already taken care of this. And you can't square and say, oh, no, the city council approved a specific, specifically for this property, a density of three, R3 to R7 for this property with what's stated in that resolution and what's stated in the general plan. And by the way, the argument, or the, in my comments and others, wasn't that that 2015 resolution was some new plan. It reiterated the plan, exactly the language, it quoted the language in the 1999 general plan. So when you put, so those are all, we believe, and I think a lot of the opponents believe, if you start to add up the impact on the Old Pecos Trail Scenic Corridor, the impact on traffic, the impact on the neighborhoods, the impact on public safety, and you weigh that against, oh, the advantages of 20 market rate houses and five affordable houses, it doesn't measure up. And we really think that that is the question here, and that's why we're kind of hoping, I think a lot of people is, that you'll pay attention to that. We're not arguing against affordable housing. And, you know, there was a comment, I think, by Counselor Cassett. I don't know how old you are. I know how old I am, but, well, I'm 72, but-
I need you to wrap up too.
But I can tell you, when you talked about the children, when you grew up there, my kids grew up there, and we actually have, over the years, fought in that neighborhood to do, among other things, to keep Westia Road not becoming a through street because we were afraid that with the increasing traffic that's been coming off of Old Pecos Trail onto Westia, because that's the way people cut through to get to Albertson's and places.
Okay, I think you're getting away from my question. So thank you. I appreciate your comments. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay. Others who wish to ask questions of staff or any of our witnesses? Counselor Lindell, everybody feeling like they've had their, their questions answered? If that's the case, then I will close the public hearing, recognizing that once it's closed, if someone suddenly discovers they need to ask more questions, we'll have to have a motion to reopen it. We can do that, but we can't just do it without a formal reopening. At this time, then, I will entertain a motion and a second on whether to grant or deny this zone change, and the person making the motion should do his or her best to state your reasoning for your motion so that it becomes part of our record when we get to the effort to have findings of fact and conclusions of law. Is there a motion?
Yes. I move to, let's see, deny case 2022-5063, 2200 Old Pecos Trail rezoning and direct staff to draft proposed findings of facts and conclusions of law reflecting the governing body's decision on the basis that the application does not meet criteria number three. A different use category is more advantageous to the community as articulated in the general plan or other adopted city plans.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. And I'd like to hear discussion as we tried to do during the questioning, if it's possible to keep the points to five to 10 minutes, that would be optimal. But I understand there's a lot of ground we covered in all of these hearings, and you may want to revisit some of that as you take a position on the issue. Counselor Cassett and then Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're right, there is a, I could speak on this for 30 minutes, and I will not. Thanks. I think that there really actually is a lot that speaks to some of the broader processes that we need to be moving forward with in terms of planning, especially with the general plan update coming forward. And there's a lot of really challenging conversations here about the challenges that our community is facing, and I think that we are at a tipping point. We might actually be over it, of really needing to understand that the world has changed and that the housing market has become almost untenable for a lot of, for so many individuals. When I talked about character, and you know, I specifically referenced the character of Soli Lomas. But I also think we need to think about overall what's happening in the city of Santa Fe. People are being displaced out of our city. We cannot stop people from moving here. This is an incredible, beautiful community. There's a reason that we all love it so much. And people come here and they move, and they have more money, and they can make cash offers, and they push people out. And we are losing the diversity that has created the cultural heritage that Santa Fe is today. We are losing our young families. I have to say, I say this frequently, I should not exist in this city. I'm a single mom that makes under $40,000 a year. But I'm lucky. I have a safety net. I have this incredible safety net in my family. So I do get to be here. But that means that it is my job to look at those individuals that do not have the safety net that I have and see how we can make the city work for them. Five affordable housing units will not solve the problem. Nobody on here thinks that this will solve the problem. But the thing about housing is that we have a few different options of how we start to solve this issue. We need more units. Now, we can build giant apartment buildings. We've been told that you don't like those. We can build these, you know, sprawl of suburbia that you're seeing all over District Four and District Three. People don't like those either. So we need to start looking at infill. Chances are, with how short we are on housing right now, we're going to have to do a combination of all of them. And as the general plan states, there should be no neighborhood, there should be no part of the city that does not do its part. What I find really interesting about this application is while it will meet the the letter of the future land use map, which, by the way, I understand the Old Pecos Trail Corridor was called out in the general plan in the same breath, the governing body that did have the ability to, I imagine at that point, amend the future land use map and could say, we think the Old Pecos Trail Corridor is so important that on this area, this future land use map, we are going to actually change it to one to three, take it out of the infill zone, which gives it a minimum of R5, and they did not do that. So they understood that this is a balancing act that we are going to have to be looking at. And so we are taking, taking this opportunity to say, yes, infill is important, and also how we do the infill is incredibly crucial. With our current code, with our current zoning, we do not necessarily have the tools at our fingertips to perhaps do this in such a way that might be might be more creative, might be more amenable, might allow us to balance out these various needs. And I hope that we really take a hard look at that as we move forward with the general plan and the code updates coming forward. But right now, sorry, circling back, I know that 20 houses will not change this. I know that five houses will not change this, but the point is that it is an additive effect, and the entire city has to be part of this. As I brought up last time, you know, the numbers that we have for what's going on with units in the housing pipeline, remembering that our districts are not geographically equally spread, and District Four is currently the smallest geographic district, with District One at 780, District Two at 906, District Three at 4,034, second smallest geographic district, and District Four at 4,651. We can see that the south side is taking the brunt of the housing crisis. And everyone says, well, that's where there's land. There's land here too. I think I've hit the majority of my points. You know, I, I know I sound very, very passionate about this, and it's because I am, and because I do see that there is such a challenge here, and I worry about, I worry about what's happening to our city. The general plan that called for this area to be more dense, it put it in the infill zone, it called it for it to be at least R5. I mean, if we think that housing is, is, you know, such a crucial need and that R3 doesn't meet the need, well, what does? R5, R7? You get more affordable units there. So this is a balancing act. And so with, going to R3, actually, R2.6, still keeping it in the very low-density residential, we work on increasing the density, we work on this gentle density, as it sometimes is referred to, without making drastic changes to the neighborhood, and whether or not that is enough, I'm sure there are members of our community that said, you know, this project was not dense enough. I think that it's been really interesting, I haven't asked them, but to see that the housing advocacy groups have not come out for this one, and I'm going to guess if I ask them. and I'm going to guess if I ask them, that they would say this project wasn't good enough for us to support because we need more density in the city. But I do understand, as I mentioned, I grew up in this neighborhood. This, this is the neighborhood that raised me. Zia and Old Pecos was the very first intersection that I turned onto a major street because I was too afraid to turn onto Rodeo. So I drove through on those dirt roads to, to make the, the right turn onto Rodeo, I wasn't ready for a left yet. And I, I do understand that that there is something extremely special about this corridor. I drive it every single day to take my child to school. It is beautiful. And part of the beauty of this corridor is actually the architecture. That as you drive through, you know, there's these gorgeous walls with these beautiful gates that are, that, you know, that, that bright blue that we see all over Santa Fe and the ristras. I mean, there's, there's a lot that goes in to the visual appeal, to the character of our city. And I think that we need to take all that into consideration, the open space, the views of the mountains. But also ultimately, the people that live here, I think, is, is the most crucial piece that we need to be thinking about. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. I, I have no particular order. If you just want to speak, raise your hand. Counselor, we'll go to Counselor Garcia and then Councilwoman Villarreal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The proposal in front of us is very, very challenging. And I think what really complicated the, the process is the trust factor. And what I mean by the trust factor is that in nineteen ninety-nine, the city committed to a public participation process that would develop standards, land uses, density and design controls. I can't explain why that didn't happen, but it didn't happen. Then in twenty fifteen, there was a number of counselors and former Mayor Gonzalez that brought forth the resolution that requested to reinitiate that process. And we've got two sides of the story during the hearing on what happened and how things broke down. And again, it comes back down to trust. And it behooves us as a city government to complete what we commit to. Because this is a perfect example of when we don't get our work done, it comes back to bite us in the rear end. And so I know it was stated by staff that through the Chapter fourteen re-hall, that we'll begin to address this. This public participation process needs to begin immediately, in my opinion. And it, not, not only with one community group, but any community member that wants to participate. That's a public participation process. And so as we move forward with this, it is critical that we have a public participation process as outlined in the general plan and through the approved resolution, that that process is fulfilled, that recommendations are put forth to this governing body. And that way, ultimately, our community is not put through a troubling situation like this. Because it then comes down to housing. And the discussion of is nine houses good enough versus twenty-five houses good enough? I am a strong proponent of housing and affordable housing in particular. So any affordable unit we can put on the market is a positive. So with that being said, we need to complete this process. We need to move forward as a community. That way, we can determine how we as a city continue to grow. That is what this city has done since its inception. Hundreds of years ago, we grow, we grow as a community, we grow as a culture. And it's up to us as a government to ensure that we are adapting to that growth and moving forward in the communities and the residents' best interest. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilwoman Villarreal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to first thank the staff for the amount of work they did with this project and the different iterations. And so it's a lot of work. It's very complex. And I also want to commend the community members that took so much time to dive into the details and the, learn about the facts, understand how complex land use is in, in Santa Fe. And just wanted to thank you all, too, and also to my colleagues for your thoughtful questions and trying to really see clarity in a land use cases like these are so difficult. There are just a lot of layers. The history is there, past counselors and decisions that we had no control over. And so that's what's hard about where we are today. And so thank you all for your thoughtful questions. I just wanted to note that I was active in the process with very passionate community members like yourselves in the completion of the West Santa Fe River Corridor zoning overlay. A couple of you are actually in-house that participated in that. And at the time, we did actually have long-range planning staff that was available to assist. And so that, that project actually took priority. And community members, they worked diligently with staff for, I think it was about six to eight months or so. There were compromises that were made, many around the development and design standards. And there was middle ground that was found. Not everybody was happy, but I think in the turnout, there was a good balance. Some would say the overlay district for the West Santa Fe River Corridor was, did not do enough to protect the corridor. And others would say that it's too rigid and it doesn't allow for enough growth and density. And we're talking about an area that was a section of the historic El Camino Real. And in some regard, you would say that this was an unspoiled area, entryway into Santa Fe. And it was near the Santa Fe River and how precious that was, which is no longer flowing. So all of these things to say, like the unspoiled pieces of Santa Fe, there's some that would say that there aren't any left. And I actually think there's some new ones that we have beautiful areas that we come into that are very different from the past, but they're, they're what we are, we have right now, contemporary, in contemporary times. And I guess my point is that we can't keep an urban area, and this is an urban area, suspended in time from what it was in the nineteen sixties, the nineteen seventies. But we can commit to a proactive planning process that takes into account an area that has unique characteristics, but also balances the needs of what we consider future growth and housing needs. And as a former community planner, which I am, I just think we definitely need to move forward with trying to figure out how this, we need to move forward with this corridor, Sina Corridor Plan in parallel with the update to the general plan. It's a must, it has to happen, staff knows this. And so I think one thing to note, though, for those of you that want to be continuing to practice or be part of this process, keeping R-one zoning anywhere in the city is not equitable. And it's frankly poor planning. And if we go through any future overlay or corridor plans, R-one shouldn't be allowed. I think, I don't personally, if I'm still in the council, I will not approve anything that's R-one. It doesn't make sense in, in the urban setting. That kind of density, we are only going to probably be seeing in the county or in semi-ruin areas. And that kind of zoning actually contributes to people living outside of our city. We have sixty percent of our, our workforce that commutes into the city. That, to me, is unsustainable. And that's all income groups, actually. So I just, I think there's aspects of this development that are reasonable. They made some good modifications. I think it's going to be nice for the people to get to live there, whether they're market rate homes or, or affordable homes. And I also think that you all were going to be under a microscope, and you're going to need to do everything right, every single thing right, which you should. And the developer is going to have people watching to make sure that you hold, uphold all the things that you promised to uphold. And so just want to make that point, there's a lot of eyes on this development, and they, and they need to do it right. I do want to have my colleagues consider that maybe, for lack of a better term, a temporary moratorium on an area, in this area, so that we can actually complete the corridor overlay designs, development standards in partnership with the community and staff. I don't know what that looks like, I'm willing to explore that. But I just think we can't do anything if it's not clear about what our standards are and not having anything in place that the public feels good about or that this area and community members feel good. So I think that it's up to staff to really commit to this proactive planning process and in addition to the update of the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Others who wish to speak at this time? I see Councilwoman Ramara Worth.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this has been a tough one. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. Thank you, councilors, for your patience and your time in all of this. Thank you to the staff for their time in all of this and their willingness to continue to answer our questions. Again, I just want to state that, for the record, that who's to blame for why the Old Pecos Trail Corridor was not adopted and the fact that I tried to get some movement on getting a Old Pecos Trail Corridor overlay in place when I was first elected, aren't relevant to the criteria that we have been asked to use in forming, in forming a decision around the, whether we approve this zoning or not. But I do think that the general plan does lay out, and we've heard three different times, that this corridor is special and there should be an overlay district. And we should develop, the develop, the density and development standards for this area. That was never done. The general plan said it should be done. So in some ways, I, I find it in conflict with also the fact that the general plan says that we should have zoning in this area for a particular level, when we also say we should have development standards and density requirements for this particular area. And since we never did the overlay, we don't really know what they should or shouldn't be. I think the general plan also, as I've said, you know, says that we should, where's the words? Maintain and respect Santa Fe's unique personality, sense of place and character. I don't deny any of the, my colleague talking about the problem we have. We may be at a tipping point. We certainly are struggling with affordable housing. We are struggling with people being able to afford to live here. People are being displaced. We need to deal with those things. But if we don't also honor our character, our uniqueness, our sense of place at the same time, we're going to lose something not only very special to those of us who live here, but also, you know, honestly, to our, you know, I, I think it's an economic development driver. If, if we just want to build the whole city up and not, you know, pay any attention to our historic nature, our, 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 our open space, our, the things that make us unique, the things that give us character, I, I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot. And so I don't think that this meets the, the criteria, that it's more advantageous to the community because we're not honoring some things in the general plan that we say we hold as values and should be themes and should be guiding policies. Thank you, Mayor.
And Counselor Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be brief, and I want to thank everyone for their time. I know that this has been a difficult discussion, and there's a lot of passion, and there's a lot of heart in this discussion from every end. And so I just, I thank you for that because I think it's been very insightful. I do want to speak to advantageous. And it seems like we all have different views as to what that is. I go back to youth, you'll find I often do that. I happen to work with the population, which is our youth. And the number of homelessness we have amongst our youth right now is alarming and more than most people know. I happen to hug and interact and support these youth who are actually going through it. So I actually know it firsthand. And when we talk about five affordable houses, we're talking about family homes. I see firsthand when these kids are able to have a house of their own. It works. We have great programs and they do end up in these homes. I know there was some conversation about, like, who will it actually benefit? It'll benefit these kids. Because I see it, I see it happen. And when these units become available and we can share news as educators and educational leaders with families that they will finally have a home, it is amazing, and the impact is long-lasting because it's youth who define our future as Santa Fe. I also wanted to really value what Councilwoman Villarreal said in regards to, we have new things that are adding value to our city. We have people that add value to our city. We have developments that bring people together and form communities. And we have kids meeting up and riding bikes and exploring the beautiful city that we have that's supposed to support them and nourish them. And development isn't negative. It's bringing the diverse people that define Santa Fe as Santa Fe together. We're creating a space for that. I value that. I find that advantageous. I found, find placing children in home advantageous. And I think that with this development in particular, we are still valuing things. That's why we are meeting setbacks. That is why we are not going too tall. That is why I imagine when there is actually a design presented to the planning commission, it'll respect the design of other neighborhoods in the area. But I don't want to rest on the fact that we think development or creating neighborhoods where people can come together is not advantageous because I see it firsthand. I see my kids enjoy it. I am a mother of two. And I, too, have really struggled with finding housing. I lived with my parents for a very long time as an adult with kids. Talk about feeling like a failure. Fortunately, I was able to move up in leadership and provide for them. But if we had true numbers that represented the number of parents that feel the way I did then, but actually have no hope or direction in providing a home for their children, I think that this might look a little bit different. I believe in equity. I believe in housing people. We don't have equity right now. Councilwoman Cassidy, Cassidy expressed some of the numbers across our districts right now in regards to housing. Our neighborhoods are growing. Some of us have had to deal with that growth exponentially. And there hasn't been this much voice a lot of times with that growth. And I, I, I'd encourage us to reflect on that fact. I think that this plan is, in my mind, acceptable. I look forward to individuals here being pleasantly surprised with what it could possibly offer if it is passed today. And with that, I think I'm done, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Others? Counselor Garcia, Counselor Lindell? Counsel, Counselor Rivera, you have the floor, sir.
I'll be brief, Mayor. I know everyone's probably getting pretty tired on our third day of, of hearings, but I just wanted to thank everyone for being here, both the applicant, the neighbors. These heart issues are difficult. And I know that you living in that area, it, it means a lot to you. And I know this decision is, is going to be tough. And just wanted to thank you all for the participation and to the applicant as well for going through the process. This is what it's all about. And we'll make a decision here shortly, one way or the other. And again, just wanted to say thank you. And um, uh, again, just wanted to say thank you to staff as well, who's um, giving up your Saturday to be here to answer questions and um, all the work that you put into this. Uh, it's been um, it's been um, a very well thought process, I think. And I think I mentioned this to somebody after our first meeting that I think Dan Escubell. This has been his finest presentation that I think I've ever seen him make. So, um, and he's done a lot of good ones. But this one was very well thought out, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garcia, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, reiterate the thanks to both sides. Um, it was presented uh, very well. And I do appreciate having the opportunity to ask of both sides, um, especially with our questions or my questions about the criteria, because again, it went back to criterion and, and we keep on talking about subjectivity. And, and that's difficult um, to, to take out of this process because everybody here is passionate about our community. As elected official for District Three, I don't just represent them, I represent the whole city. And, and, and I feel strongly about that because um, you know, we, we sit here and try and listen to fact. We listen to testimony, we listen to sometimes things that come up that uh, you know, aren't part of the facts because it's, we're passionate about it. And uh, I do want to, again, say thank you to staff because I think this was a very difficult um, very, very difficult uh, plan um, and process. And um, they worked very hard on making sure that things are presented to us in a way that we understand. And as well as the uh, the people of the public, because I, I, I think that uh, everyone that came in was passionate about where they live. And, and I think that's the thing that we need to not forget overall in our city. Is that, yes, we are a full community of Santa Fe. So, thank you all for being here. And uh, as Counselor Rivera said, we'll be coming up with a decision here shortly.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lindell?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I too want to thank everyone. Everyone that's shown up, everyone that wasn't able to show up, lots of people that we heard from um, with varying points of view that um, haven't been in the chamber. And those of you that have shown up numerous times. It's a lot of effort. Also to my colleagues, um, I think that uh, people on this council have done an exceptionally good job on this, as well as staff. It's hundreds and hundreds of hours that they put into this. And um, I don't think anybody's, at the end of all of this, is going to go out and take a victory lap around the building. Everybody's worn out with it. Everybody's done their best. I do know that. I think that there were some terrific questions asked. Some concepts brought forward that we haven't talked about before that we needed to talk about. And uh, it's been a mammoth amount of work from the council. No one took this lightly. And certainly staff didn't take it lightly either. So I'm appreciative about it and um, I think that those are my comments, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, I'll take a moment to share some of my thoughts, starting with, as has been said, thanks and appreciation and gratitude, but also a comment about how this land use decision tells us much more about Santa Fe than about one particular zoning case. Uh, this is Santa Fe at its best. There's a reason why our community is the best place to live. And it's because the people who live here care about it more than any other place. Uh, the level of engagement, commitment, concern, uh, desire to get to a good outcome is why Santa Fe, regardless of the decision today, will continue to be an outstanding, unique and exceptional community. People here love this city. Members of the community love their city. Members of the governing body love their city. And we're willing to take the time and make the effort, read the documents, participate in the process so that we not only express that love, but we make every effort to demonstrate it in a way that will preserve, protect and respect the unique qualities of Santa Fe. Uh, listening to my colleagues uh, as we're getting ready to take a, a vote, I'm struck by the fact that there are really two discussions going on simultaneously. One is about the case. That's what we'll vote on. The other is about the teachable moment that we're in as a community. Educators talk about teachable moments as times when something becomes so crystal clear that you have to talk about the underlying principles and the deep opportunity to learn something from the specifics that goes far beyond the specifics. For me, um, I think I'll just uh, share some of the thoughts that have been going through my mind as we've wrestled with this very challenging case. It is clear that there are tough decisions that come to this governing body for votes. None is more challenging than the decision on land use cases. Our job in these quasi judicial hearings is to come to the case as if we were judges. That's why I said earlier, imagine you're in a courtroom uh, and have that kind of seriousness and decorum. We're supposed to come to these cases with open minds. We listen to both sides. We understand the zoning code, the facts in the case. And then we render a decision based on whether the facts in the case fit the zoning code that's on the books. That sounds fairly simple in its description. It's almost always complicated in its application. There are several reasons why these land use cases are almost always so divisive, emotional, and often filled with anger and frustration. First, not everyone in the community understands that in these land use cases, the governing body's role and rules are different from our usual position. Admittedly, it's hard to understand why it's different. We're sitting up here on the dais. We look the same. We sit in our usual chairs. It's just the same as if we were voting on an, a, a contract or a, an ordinance. But when it comes to these cases, we're supposed to conduct ourselves differently. We aren't supposed to talk to either opponents or proponents before the case comes to us. We aren't supposed to read emails from either side. That's hard for people to understand because even as late as this morning, I was getting emails from constituents urging me to vote one way or the other. I'm not supposed to read those. I'm certainly not supposed to respond to them. We're not supposed to read editorials in the newspaper or letters to the editor. We're not even supposed to be influenced by the number of people who are in the council chambers for either side. No more than a judge would be influenced in a case by how many people show up in that case in the courtroom and base the judge's ruling on the people in the room. We're supposed to be impartial. We're supposed to be unbiased. We're supposed to be non-political. Second, in most of these cases, both sides have a strong and compelling point of view. There's truth on both sides. In this case, for example, it's true that the corridor coming into the city that is the Old Pecos Trail is lovely. It's attractive. It needs to be respected and protected. We heard that from the proponents who agreed to that proposition when I asked them. At the same time, we understand that the proposed development meets the zoning called for in the general plan, responds to our critical need for housing, including five affordable units in a part of the city where affordable single-family units are hard to come by. Arguments on both sides of the issue are true. The governing body ends up weighing and balancing the conflicting points of view. If nine homes are permitted under the existing R1 zoning, would the 25 homes proposed under the R3 zoning substantially harm the beauty of the corridor? Are the five affordable homes of benefit that makes the trade-offs worth it? These are hardly black and white arguments, despite how they're presented during the public hearing. Weighing the pros and cons of the two sides, where both sides have merit, makes it hard for the governing body to make a decision. The difficulty also is added to and made more complicated by the emotions that cases like the Old Pecos Trail engender. From the point of view of the opponents of the zone change, the damage to the corridor from 25 houses, 16 more than already allowed, will be enormous, irreparable and disastrous. From the point of view of the proponents, the proposed housing development meets all the development criteria that were placed on the corridor to protect it, including a large setback, a low height limit and a sizable open space requirement. In these cases, there are usually facts that can be agreed upon. And in fact, most of the facts are agreed upon. Both sides understand how important the corridor is. Both sides agree housing is a priority. So what makes them difficult are the emotions and the anger that often accompanies them. How can we reduce the level of anger? What can we do to make cases like these less divisive? First, we need to review and revise our existing early neighborhood notification process. In the case of the Old Pecos Trail Zone Change, despite three E N N meetings, I can't say that much was accomplished to bridge the divide between the proponents and the opponents. The E N N can't solve every dispute in every land use case, but we can look at practices that other communities and other places have developed. Uh, I hold up a copy of a book called Fixing Your City by George Crandall, in which he talks about ballots that go out to neighborhoods so that individuals at their own kitchen table can evaluate a proposal and send their ballot back in. We heard about Albuquerque having a mediation process. The goal is clear information, shared not only in a contentious public meeting, but also in flyers and brochures and information material that comes directly to your home. Second, as I tried to do at the beginning of these comments, we need to do a better job of explaining why these land use cases are handled in a quasi judicial manner and what that means for the governing body and why we conduct ourselves the way we do. It's hard for the city council and for me to distance ourselves from the comments of our constituents. It's almost an unnatural act not to hear you. It's just as hard for you to understand why we're suddenly so unresponsive or seemingly so. A packed council chamber can and often does influence a policy decision on a vote or an ordinance. It's explicitly not supposed to drive our decision on land use cases, as counterintuitive as that seems. Third, we've all acknowledged that we need to update our general plan. Our land use code needs updating. That work is now underway. We budgeted for this several years ago, only to have those plans disrupted by COVID. If you take the time to read our general plan, you will be impressed. So much of it still stands up after 25 years of, from its initial adoption. And similarly, the zoning code is still fundamentally sound, despite having been amended over the years. We don't need to stop all land use decisions until the current updates are complete, but we can and should acknowledge that these documents aren't perfect. They, and that we all have to practice a measure of patience, goodwill and understanding when we come to land use cases. And finally, as my colleagues have acknowledged, we need to say out loud how important these cases are for our city's future and the legitimacy of differing points of view as we resolve them. There is no doubt in my mind that the future of Santa Fe runs through our land use department. We're working hard to staff it up, to improve the use of technology in its daily operations, to provide excellent service and to emphasize the professionalism that informs all of its work. There's also no doubt in my mind that the people who propose or oppose any given development still have the best interests of Santa Fe at, at heart. It's simply wrong to ascribe bad motives to anyone in these cases. Not every developer who proposes to build more housing in our city is evil, simply looking to make a fast buck while ruining our precious quality of life and unique sense of place. Not every neighbor who opposes a housing development in any part of our city is evil, simply interested and seeking to practice a not in my backyard philosophy when it comes to growth and development. We all love this place we call our home. We need more housing so working families can afford to live and work here. And we need to respect and protect the unique treasure that is Santa Fe. The best way for us to achieve both of these goals is to respect each other. We need to listen to each other and acknowledge there are pros and cons to each proposal. We need to look for solutions that emphasize a both and perspective. Both respectful preservation and smart growth. We are blessed as a city that we can still make these decisions and provide a better future for our city and for the residents who will live here in the future. The decision today is difficult and it involves trade-offs. It's not a black and white decision. It is, as we have said over and over again, a, a question of whether the impact on the community by the development is worth the benefit to the community of the additional housing and the five affordable units that it will provide. Uh, it is a special corridor that deserves special treatment. This development, we've heard consistently, has tried over and over again to meet or exceed the South Central Highway Corridor requirements and the requirements for the zone change. And I think we will have to do our very best to apply those criteria and make that judgment about the relative merits of this case, understanding that there is no absolute right or absolute wrong in this decision. Thank you. Uh, other comments? If there are none, uh, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Can you remind us the motion?
Motion is to deny the uh, request for a zone change and the uh, uh, explanation offered by the uh, motion maker was that it did not meet the third uh, criteria regarding what is in the community's best interest when matched to the general plan. Would you call the roll?
Got it. Uh, Counselor Cassett?
No.
Counselor Chavez?
No.
Counselor Lee Garcia? Counselor Garcia, would you like me to come back to you?
Yes, please.
Okay, perfect. Counselor Michael Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell? Counselor Rivera?
No.
Counselor Malworth?
Yes.
Councilwoman Villarreal?
No.
Counselor Lee Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
No.
Motion was denied.
All right, is there another motion uh, to consider? Uh, I'm sorry. Counselor Rivera, your hand was up.
I was going to move to approve case number 2022-5063, 2200 Old Pecos Trail rezoning, adopting bill 2022-22, and direct staff to draft proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law reflecting the governing body's decision. Uh, I believe the applicant has met all the criteria for rezoning and I haven't heard anything um, that would show otherwise.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. I'll look to see if anyone wishes to make a final comment before we go to a vote on it. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Counselor Cassett?
Yes.
Counselor Chavez?
Yes.
Counselor Lee Garcia?
I believe since I voted in the opposition on the other side, I say no.
Counselor Michael Garcia?
No.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Maura Worth?
No.
Councilwoman Villarreal?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Motion carries, that completes our work.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like some guidance from the city attorney about how we move forward about talking about this case. I believe you will be bringing findings and facts and conclusions of law to us. I have the feeling that there are a lot of people who would like to discuss this. What is your advice?
Mayor, councilors, thank you for the question. Yes, we will be bringing findings of fact and conclusions of law. The action is not formally final until you adopt those. And then, should this be appealed, please do consider yourself still in the quasi-judicial posture. Because a remedy, should the district court take action, could be to remand back to the governing body.
So let me, for a point of clarification, if we are asked to explain our vote at this point, are we free to do that?
Mayor Weber, councilors, I think you can explain your vote if you're just making a statement about it. But a discussion about the merits of the case would be ex parte communication.
So don't get into the merits and the demerits, but explain why we voted the way we did.
Mayor Weber, councilors, that is fine if you wish to do so. You do not need to.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, we're adjourned.